We are dialed in. Yes, we're good? All right, thank you, sir. So council members, now you're all officially council members. We have our council hat on. Members of the staff and ladies and gentlemen that have joined us this evening, welcome to our city council meeting. This is July 16th. It is a regular city council meeting, and with that being said, thank you for being here.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Ram, but if you could just speak directly into the mic, I think they're having some difficulty hearing you in the back.
Sure. We may need to adjust the volume a little bit because it was a little lower in the last meeting as well. With that said, we'll go ahead and call them. You need to order. Madam Clerk, would you mind calling and roll, please?
Mayor Owens.
Present.
Councilmember of District One, Ryan Davis.
Present.
Councilmember of District Two, Damian Oladipo.
Present.
Councilmember of District Three, and Mayor Pro Tim, Keisha Jeffcoat.
Present.
Councilmember of District Four, Councilmember Alk.
Present.
District Five, Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
And Councilmember of District Six, Deborah Herndon.
Present.
Coral, present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that being said, Councilman Davis, would you mind lead us in an invocation, please?
Yes, let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, the love you give us each and every day, Father. We just pray right now that your mighty hand continue to guide us as we guide this city, Father God. Father, give us everything that we need, Father God, to do what we need for the residents, for the city, Father God, to make it the city that you have ordained it to be. So we just thank you right now, God. We bless you and we praise your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could stand for a pleasure of allegiance, I'll be led by our Mayor Pro Tim, Ms. Keisha Jeffcoat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, ma'am. All right, Councilman Ben, create a copy of the agenda prior to the meeting. At this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, but with an amendment to move items 12B through E to the beginning of our public hearing section. So to have all the URA, I think most people here tonight are probably here to discuss the urban redevelopment discussion, so I'd like to move that to the front out of respect for people's time.
I second.
I second.
I think it was seconded by, yes. All right, motion's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion on this, council? I mean, I would just like to say that we have several public hearings. I don't know that, we may have other people that are here for those hearings as well. I don't have a problem moving to the front, but I just want to acknowledge we have several other hearings, four or five other hearings on the agenda as well. Again, I don't have a problem moving it to the beginning, but I did want to acknowledge the fact that we do have other hearings, and it's not the only one. With that said, any other discussion?
Well, do you want to move all of the public hearings to the front?
They are, but the request was to move this specifically to the front ahead of all the other public hearings.
Or maybe after item E, under public hearings?
The motion was made to move it to the.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to what I've suggested and also add after the public hearing for the URA and all those items. Then also add the zoning case for Kingdom Business Z30 after that item. So the URA discussion first, public hearing, and then we'll have our zoning case for the case that came back for the second time this meeting.
Is that item 7A you're talking about?
Mm-hmm. Seven, 6E. So moving the URE stuff before or after the public hearing, councilwoman?
Right, no, it's TKH.
Which one is TKH?
That's unfinished business.
Before.
Right, that's why I asked about 7A.
Yeah, so is it 7A? Yes, let's move that after the URA.
Councilman Alk, can you clarify if you want 12B to E moved before the public hearing or after the public?
Could you talk into the mic? I can't hear you.
I was asking for Councilman Alk to clarify if she wants the URE stuff, 12B to 12E, moved before public hearing or after public hearing?
Yes, move those items before public hearings. The first public hearing will be item. She wants item 6E after this. Which one's the hearing? 12C will be the first public hearing that we hear, followed by 7A.
Seven, okay, hold on, because I think the goal was to keep all of the URA activity together.
Yes, so move all that.
So that would be.
So she's doing it first.
12B to 12E, and you want to put that ahead of the public hearings?
Mm-hmm.
So we're doing 12E?
So we have 12BCDE right after agenda item number five?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I would suggest why not just keep item 7A where it is, because that's after the other public hearings?
Oh, sometimes it can take quite a bit of time, and we know that.
The other hearings?
My motion stands to move that as the first public hearing. So move everything, 12B through E, before the public hearings, after approval of the agenda. So we first, and then the first public hearing will be item 7A moved to the first. Got it?
7A is not a public hearing. It's a second read of the rezoning.
All right, we'll move this unfinished business to before the public hearings.
Okay, so to understand this, is 12B through D to move that prior to public hearings, and then item 7A to move that after?
12E.
12B and E?
12E.
That is what I was clarifying? Yes?
Okay.
Okay. Do you?
Yeah, I second.
Thank you. Any other discussion about that? Hearing done. All in favor of approval of the agenda with the amendments from Councilman Alk, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, thank you. We will move now, based on the amended agenda, directly to item 12B, which is a consideration and approval of resolution updating the URA within the city of Mableton. So with that being said, do you? Okay, so this item is, council, as you know, from our previous hats, there is proposal to have additional URA areas, an expanded Area One and a new Area Two. With that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to consider and approve.
So we'll, I thought this was discussion. We'll have the hearing and then we'll take the vote to do those things.
So I'm on item 12B, which is a consideration and approval of a resolution. So I'm going to ask for a motion. And if there's a second, I'll give a second, and then we'll have discussion about the matter. About updating the URA areas, which we have one, and we're talking about expanding that one and adding a second.
I'd like to make a.
Madam, Madam Clerk.
I just wanted to comment, with all these changes, my technology's gone wacko, because.
Understood, I would do my best.
I had it in a certain order, and now the timestamp and everything is like just, so just remember that whenever y'all do things like this, please. Thank you.
Understood, thank you, ma'am. Madam Attorney, do you recognize?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide clarity to the council that this particular item is not approving the plan. So the plan approval would come after your public hearing. So you have the, this item, and then you have your public hearing, and then you have your plan. This item would be approving the extension of the areas, but not the plan. So I just wanted to make that clear with council. So you wouldn't be approving the plan. The public would still have the opportunity to comment on the plan, to tell you whether they think it should be, what you have it as within the agenda, et cetera. So you are not approving the plan with this motion. You are just approving to expand the areas so that you can now discuss whether the plan should be, include those areas or whether it should be narrowed.
I'd like to make a motion for the consideration and approval of resolution updating the urban redevelopment areas within the city of Mableton.
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilman Davis. Any further discussion about what this is?
Yes, so, are we having discussion?
Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
All right, so how is the areas determined? Why, what was the selection process for Area Two?
It was consultations with the council. Just as far as privileged discussions, as well as conversations with staff and administration on the executive level. But that deals with the plan, I mean, that deals with the areas that were identified for expansion. There were no areas identified that did not result from higher level confidential discussions with the council, if that is one of the concerns.
Are we able to disclose what those additions are? The addresses and the areas that was added to the plan?
Well, so that, yeah, yeah, I can certainly do that right now.
Okay.
So just keep in mind, this is not voting on the actual plan, because I don't want to confuse.
Areas.
The public into thinking that this motion is to vote on the plan. But the areas that have been expanded, the city several months ago initially identified what the urban redevelopment areas would be. There has been consideration of expanding those areas to, and actually, there was one area that was identified, URA area number one. So this consideration would be to expand Area One to include additional parcels that are on Mableton Parkway. If you look at the plan, it's in the agenda packet. If you pull it up on your phone, or it's online on the city's website, it's the same plan that was in the agenda when the agenda was published. So if you've had the opportunity to look at that, you can look at the map, and it'll specifically identify the acreage, the parcels. So it would be expanding Area One to include three new parcels, and it would be creating an Area Two that is near the Silver Comet Trail. So the council, if you approve this motion, then it would allow you to go forward with hearing comments from the public on what their thoughts are on the plan. And then your vote following that public hearing would be whether to approve the actual plan.
Thank you. Any other discussion, council? Councilman Ferguson or Herndon, do you have any other discussion, public discussion?
No, we're just trying to make sure that we're on, okay, know where we are.
All right, great. With that being said, if we have no other discussion, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of consideration and approval of resolution updating the urban redevelopment areas within the city of Mableton, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. And do we have, I didn't capture any opposition to this? All right, the measure carries. And I asked for clarification. I didn't hear any nays, so. Thank you. With that being said, thank you, council, for the, for moving this forward. At this point in time, we're going into, into, what's 12C? Madam Clerk, 12C, which is the public hearing for the proposed amendments to the city of Mableton Urban Redevelopment Plan for 2024. So we've cleared the hurdle on the areas itself, so this is related to the plan. At this point in time, Madam Clerk, I don't know if you have anything different for this public hearing than others, but I think there's a, there's a time limit. We usually ask for those who are speaking in pro, in pro of this, to speak first, and then those that are against it to speak afterwards. There is a 20-minute overall timeline on this, 10 minutes pro and 10 minutes against. At this point in time, Madam Clerk, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. At this point in time, those that would like to speak for this urban redevelopment plan, please make your way to the podium here, and you can stand along the wall if there's a queue.
Mayor, if I may, can we give a little more clarity as to, I don't, without a map, I don't know that the public is completely, fully aware of what we're discussing. Do we want to give more background on like what we currently have as the urban redevelopment? I know you briefly touched on it, but right now, like, so I'm just going to give a real quick two-second recap.
Yes.
Right now, the city's urban redevelopment area is on Pocket Drive and Mableton Parkway or near Cobh Works. It's two parcels across from each other. That was purchased back in, I think, August of 2024. What is being, the ask today is to amend the area to include 6116 Mableton Parkway, which is where our operational building is. If you've ever gotten a permit or a license, it's that building. I believe it's the house next to it, correct? That is also in the area?
That's correct, 6116.
Yes, there's a little house right next to that property. And then there's a third property, which is off Silver Comet Trail, off of Hicks Road and Concord Road on that corner.
So I want to make sure we keep this to, is correct. We have purchased that. That is part of the URA plan, and that can be discussed as far as how we want to develop land that we've already purchased and what we're going to do with it. I want to be very specific here. We are talking about areas that we've covered, which does cover that, which we've purchased. But we are going to talk specifically now about the, what's covered in the new areas, two new areas, and the plan for that, so.
New areas?
Two, no, one new area, one expanded area. So Area One has been expanded to a couple of, several more parcels, which actually includes 6116, the area where operations building is now, and a couple of the parcels along with that. And as you mentioned before, the Area Two, which is a net new area, which covers areas up off of Concord around the Silver Comet Trail area. So again, I'm sorry, there is no actual presentation of the areas, but we've talked about the areas. The plan itself, as it relates to the URA, is about expanding areas. And as a recap, we talked about the areas, but let's talk about the actual URA itself, the Urban Development Agency. The reason that it exists, which we have in the city, established a URA, is for revitalization and elimination of blight in the city. We are not unique in the fact that we have this URA. It is bestowed upon us the power of Georgia State Code, as in the Constitution. And it is a vehicle that we are using and many other cities across the state of Georgia use directly to combat blight. And when I say blight, there's a standard of code that's in the Georgia Constitution that speaks directly to what blight is. And most of us know it when you see it. I would say it's an eye test. You know, it's dumping, it's. You know, it's dumping, it's blighted areas, abandoning buildings, it is unkept areas, plenty of trash. It's also areas that have been started development and may have failed for whatever reason, so it's partial development or underdevelopment in areas. It's also homes and areas that are unsightly and have not, and have been unkept. There's also a component to blight that actually talks about could be of concern for the health and welfare of the overall city and citizens alike. So what we are continuing to do in here is using the URA as a vehicle to reduce blight in the city, and to uplift areas where we find parcels or tracts, or certain areas within the city that could use that uplift. And I, council, I've said it to you before, and I will say it in this forum, is that I have researched and studied urban redevelopment areas and plans on multiple cities across the metro Atlanta area, and quite frankly, I don't think we've expanded the URA areas enough. You know, many of us talked about blight that exists and revitalization that's needed in the city, primarily when we talk about our main corridors, Veterans Memorial and, and Mableton Parkway. And so I, I think we have an opportunity to utilize the URA even more than what we're doing to establish more areas that are clear blight, and clearly needs the city's and the URA's help in uplifting and revitalizing the city. And the bottom line is, if, if our own URA and our city isn't willing to do that, who else is going to be willing to invest in our city in the revitalization and the uplift? So again, giving some background on what the URA is, why it exists, why we have it in the city, and how we will use it, and it's attempted on using it today by expanding the areas out to both reduce blight or combat blight, but also as a way to uplift underutilized areas.
Can you explain exactly how that mechanism works? Specifically, the purpose of the URA, and why you want to utilize one, is to get a below-market rate loan, right? Is to borrow money at a optimal terms, correct? That's the mechanism, that's why you would want to use a URA?
No, I wouldn't say that. Terms are what they are, and we have bond counsel, and we have attorneys and bond market experts to actually go out to, in relationship to we build with, with banks, and we have done a pretty good job at that. We now have an actual audit that we've gone through, so we can actually get better rates than we could even a month ago, because now we actually have, our finances have been audited. So you always want to go after the, the best rate you possibly can.
So why utilize a URA instead of using what you've just mentioned with the...
Mentioned as in...
You said...
Because there are stipulations.
Councilman, please, let's allow her to finish her thought.
Has already lost.
I think it was in lieu of using some other...
Yeah, yes, in lieu of different, using a different vehicle, why use, go through the URA?
So there are several reasons to use the URA. Number one is combating blight, that is what, a vehicle that the state has provided for us solely for that reason, or largely for that reason to be able to do that. There are other areas that we could, or other tools we could utilize to purchase property. There is taking money straight out of our general fund to purchase property, which we've been advised not to do. There are other entities, like the Downtown Development Authority, which we don't have online yet, but would be, actually fall outside of this boundary, so we would not be able to utilize that. And there's general purpose bonds that we could get that would be backed by the city, which I don't think is a great tool for this, because that's very general in its sense. There's also elements that our, our Mableton Development Authority could take to look at purchasing properties. But again, that's outside of the basic premise of eliminating blight, and that's an even further outside entity. If there's questions specifically about, you know, bond, bond rates or terms, you know, those are, again, we, we're going to look at every opportunity, and quite frankly, the more that we do, the better rates we're going to be able to get, right? The more we build up credit, we're, this city is no different than businesses at that, at that rate, right? We have to be able to establish ourselves as a credit-worthy entity, and we start with having audited records, and secondly, by actually having debt that we are fulfilling.
This is not the city's debt, however, this is the URA's debt, correct?
This, this will be the city's debt.
Is the loan, I mean.
Madam Attorney, would you mind to?
It could be the city's debt.
Thank you. At this point in time, are you finished, Councilman, or any other point? Okay, thank you. We do, we have Mr. Selby who is here, if there's any specific questions to him, but I don't, I don't know if this warranted it, but if there's anything else you have, Councilman? Members that are here this evening, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to let you know, it was kind of confusing. Some people turned in public comment cards that want to do this public comment for this item, but then other people probably just want to line up against the wall. Should I be putting out the ones that...
No, I, so...
Or just put them all on the...
If, if you would like to speak for this, I've asked before, if you want to speak in, in support of this measure, you can line up and want to line, I do want to keep public comment separate, but if you are, if you filled out a public comment card in which you want to speak about this measure, don't wait until public comment, please step forward now and, and have your say. Yes, sir, please.
I guess I'm the only one.
Are we going to separate between for and against?
Yes, this is for.
For?
Oh, okay, sorry.
This is for.
Understand what we are for or against. Like, what are we actually for? Blight is a prob, it's a word that's utilized consistently with Mableton, we see blight. Anytime we go down Veterans Memorial, we see blight down Mableton Parkway, there's blight, we understand that. I don't think anyone has a problem with the URA and what the concept is for and its purpose. The problem is, how do we determine that this area that you're indicating that has blight? We don't even know what the area is, what's the blight on the area? So that we're saying yes, because at the end of the day, a bond resolution is being put into place, which is going to affect all of our tax dollars, that's what's going to happen. What we want to know is, how are we paying for this? What is, that's the focus right now, how are we going to pay for this? You can talk about blight all day, right now, we're already in a $9.5 million deficit for police services. We're talking about purchasing more property. How can you tell people to come up here and say what they stand for, when we don't even know what we're talking about here? That's a problem.
Thank you.
Please state your name, please.
My name is Jeff Padgett.
I love you, please.
I'm District 5. You know, blank, I mean, you talking about, you talking about, what are you talking about, the place is dirty, got tires on it and stuff like that? That's how you can take over? Well, I walked that property today, and I didn't see nothing to make it where it would look like that. So I'd like to see the pictures of what y'all talking about. I walked, because I, we found out about it yesterday, so I'm looking right down the road, I said, why don't you go over and look at it? And I didn't see nothing. There's a lot of places that need fixed up, man, we got the big, we got the historical part of Mableton. Nothing, you know, we got the park, you know, we, Mick and a lot of us worked together to get that park. And, but, you know, we do need parks, and if that's what you're going to do with that property, you know, that's fine, but like this lady's here said, how are we going to pay for it? That's what I want to know. Like she said, we got nine and a half million dollar deficit, we'll go ahead and pay for the police, and we're going to add this on, be a different tax. And it does say on that document I read today, it says something about, it affected our taxes about on our houses, our property taxes, to pay for this. So I want to ask y'all, is that true? Can somebody tell me the truth, is that true? Are we going to have to pay for this with property taxes?
Fair enough, fair enough. And I, and we may need to, to have our Finance Director, because we got to be clear, we don't have a city property tax in the city of Mableton.
We don't have it.
We do not, we have not had one, so nothing that we have done, or nothing that, that we've done since inception, has caused a property tax, anybody's property tax to grow up in the city, nothing that this council has done since our inception has caused this. So there is no general property tax, so nothing that we're talking about, I want to be clear, nothing that we're talking about at all is going to raise anyone's property taxes, nothing. Not, not the nine and a half million, not anything that we're talking about through our URA, nothing that we're talking about is going to raise anyone's property taxes. We do not, our mileage in the city is 0.00.
It won't change next year.
As, as, no one, I don't think it's sitting up here can say that.
Yeah, I got you.
But I have committed over and over again, and I think, and Director Ellis, I think next week I will be signing the documents again, that will say for this coming fiscal year, our property tax will be 0.00. I did it in July of 2023, I did it in July of 2024, and July of 2025, I will do it again to sign that the city of Mableton will have zero property taxes. So we can eliminate these discussions.
Are you taking the money out of your prop, are you funding to pay for this property? Somebody's got to be paying for it.
That's, that's a very good question, we can talk about that, we talked about bond counsel and, and the actual funding around whatever, whatever potential we're going to be purchasing. But I do think it's important to note that when, when we talk about bond ratings, it's a rating that we can get, that our bond counsel has dug into in our relationships with the bank. But this itself does not commit us to purchase X number of, of parcels. There is, there is limitations to what we can do. Once we purchase any property through the URA, that the city then takes and decides how to uplift or enter into agreements to either purchase or to uplift in whatever kind of way that may be. You know, that question was kind of brought up earlier about what do we do? Well, the city will have a determination on what actually to purchase, what parcel to purchase, what not. The URA, what we just, meaning we just left out of, its purpose is to make sure we identify areas, and then that we bring those forward as far as determining what those areas are. The URA does not go forward and say, yep, the city will purchase this or that. What we have to do now as a city council is, the URA has determined areas, and through that vehicle been able to establish a plan for those areas, and then it comes to the city council for approval or not. So as it relates to, one of the first questions that was asked was, is this something we can do realistically? Two things, can we afford it? And secondly, is it going to encumber any services that we have to move forward with, right? As far as delivering services to our constituents? If you don't mind, I would like to have our, our Director of Finance address those directly. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. To answer your question directly, this will not affect the property taxes, as the mayor outlined, we do not levy property taxes here in the city, and it does not affect the general fund budget in a negative way. As the city manager and I have budgeted the fiscal year '26 budget, the revenue streams that we have coming into the city to pay for city services were conservatively budgeted. With that being said, knowing that there are certain projections that are going to come in, that we purposely budgeted zero for, because we did not know what they were going to come in at, or we projected them conservatively, we have estimations that they will exceed, and that will cover the debt service payment. So there will be no services that will be cut into, nothing needs to be reduced in service to the city, because those revenues will offset, if not even more than the debt service payment, once we effectuate those new revenue streams.
Councilman, any other questions for Director Ellis, while she's up here?
I do have one, Mayor. Just for the education of the public, could you speak to why we cannot use the revenue that we would be, part of the revenue that we would be using to pay on a yearly basis for this bond service? Why we could not use that portion of the revenue to offset the cost of police services, and the cost of stormwater, and all the costs that we have to pay for?
So you're limited to your capital projects with respect to the URA? So that would be services for just administrative, public safety initiatives? And that is not defined as a capital project? A capital project under the law are things such as a municipal court complex, a recreation center, Sugar Hill. I don't know if you've been to the city of Sugar Hill. Those are public-private partnerships where the city actually owns the asset. So with these particular funds, you were limited to acquisition and uses to where the capital, I mean, to where the asset is owned by the public?
Madam Attorney, I'm not asking about what we can use the bond for. Can we disclose the amount of the bond to the public? I mean, how much were?
Yes.
6.7, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so if we do 6.7, and we have to pay, let's say, $450,000 annually out of our revenue, can we potentially use that $450,000 to offset the cost of police services and the cost of DOT services? Because we have that to pay for.
Now, I'm not aware of any way legally where we could use this funding to pay for police services. We do have bond counsel here too, is that Doug's?
I don't think she's...
No, I'm not talking about the bond.
You're talking about the general fund?
The general fund.
I know, right?
Okay, so let me clarify, so you're not, so you're saying the money that's within the general fund, can we use that to pay for?
Because if we have $450,000 to spare on an annual basis that we want to spare for this area 2, can we not use that to offset the cost of police services?
Absolutely, you can use any of the money in your general fund to pay for public safety initiatives and police services.
It would be obviously a drop in the bucket. We have a, a amount this year of nine and a half, next year, if we do continue to partner with the county, it's going to be a lot more. That is such a small portion, and the purpose of a special district is to help offset that particular service that we would be providing, the city of Mableton.
I, I, I want to be clear that when, we want to make, and I don't want to turn this to a special, or special service district conversation, but we want to make sure when we start talking about public safety, and how we're going to fund public safety in the city, I want to make sure that, that funds that are being raised for public safety goes directly towards public safety efforts. I don't want to do what other municipalities or other entities have done by taking certain money from certain areas and say they're putting it here or putting it there. I want to make sure that everyone is clear, that what we are raising money for as it relates to public safety goes to public safety, and we don't have to worry about if we're pulling money from this place or that place to cover funds.
Yeah, I just think a concern that I've gotten is, if we have $450,000 annually to spare on, you know, blight, why don't we use that to help the citizen out with the amount we'll be, for public safety, right?
Hold, go, go ahead.
I'm just saying, that's the question I've gotten, if we have that $450,000 to pay every year, why not put that towards the public safety funds and reduce the amount that we'll be getting from the SSD?
Sure, the, the biggest thing I can say is that we want to make sure those funds are dedicated towards public safety, number one. And $450,000 towards, I think, nine and a half million or whatever we're going to go back and negotiate for, there will be other revenue streams, and even outside of the special service district, there will be revenue streams that we will utilize to pay for the nine and a half and whatever that additional money that we may do. We, we are, we are slated, as council, as you know, to go back into negotiation with the county on August 4th, I think, on August 4th. I cannot in good conscience sit here and talk about potential strategies we may have around future revenue streams when we're about to go and negotiate on a long-term deal with the county. I don't think that's prudent for us to, to discuss in this venue. Anything else for Director Ellis? Thank you, ma'am. Sir, you're recognized, thank you.
Thank you. Robert Redmond, District 4, I live right off of Concord, around Gan Crossing. The space that we are interested in potentially identifying for URA at Hicks and Concord, I agree with the gentleman here, there's, there's not a ton of blight there. There was a house there that was torn down a while back, or that had been left behind. I agree that urban redevelopment's great, like, we do want to lift our community up. I feel that the decisions that we're putting forth here to purchase these properties without clearly defining the utilization of those properties is a little bit misleading to us, the public. I live in that community, I deal with the traffic where Floyd and Hicks run into each other before we get into our shopping center daily. And I am concerned that if we're using that space in a way that is going to be commercial, which I do believe the URA does not require it to be a park space or an open space, we do have the ability to revitalize with commercialization, building a center for people to come and participate in. The concern is, we're going to create more traffic, potentially cut down trees, reducing the, the loveliness that we have in that particular area of trees adjacent to the comet. There's a lot of concern around us impacting that part of our experience. It's going to be an open space, park space, passive space, wonderful. But I don't think we have a plan right now that clearly identifies what that space is going to be used for. But I don't think we have a plan right now that clearly identifies what that space is going to be used for, which makes it difficult as a citizen to be behind this. That's why I stepped back when you asked if I'm for or against. I'm definitely for revitalizing our community, but we don't have that clear understanding, one, how we're spending it, as my fellow citizens have raised, two, how we're going to apply that money to that space to revitalize the community. It makes it difficult for me to get behind that.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Jolie Elder. I'm also from District Four. Just in terms of being professional here, we, we have a slide projector. Like, you guys didn't bring maps, you guys didn't bring pictures. Like, it doesn't, it doesn't make you look good and it doesn't make you look trustworthy to all the people in the room when you couldn't even bring a couple maps and you knew you were going to talk about these districts for us. I agree with the previous gentleman. I think if we had some maps and pictures and a plan that said, okay, these are the districts, and here's what we envision these districts are going to become, and here's the money that we think we're going to need to spend to get to those districts, I, I think you'd have a lot more buy-in and trust, but you just haven't done your homework yet. But I think if you do your homework, I think you're going to get a better result. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Heidi Hunt. My property is at 720 Gregory Manor Drive. I'm in District Six. And it abuts the Brazos Drive property, which is planned to be developed by the City of Mableton. This is basically a 23-acre forest, and I don't believe it can be characterized as a blighted area. There are maybe four older houses on it that are currently, that currently are being resided in. The property contains a pond and a creek, and it backs up to the Silver Comet Trail. Its current zoning designation is R20 for single-family detached homes. Four years ago, my neighbors and I were involved in the Cobb rezoning process for this same parcel where a developer petitioned to build more than 50 homes. The developer ultimately got permission from, permission from the Cobb Commission to build 30-plus homes, but the, the development never happened. These were never built. Fast forward to today, the only information I have now is that the city is planning to purchase and give someone permission to build something on this land. What is it? Will there be zoning hearing signs? Will there be maps and plans for the proposal available to residents? What about the reports from the various departments, water, sewer, traffic impact, stormwater, environmental impact because of the creek, et cetera? All these are just questions with, with no, about which we have no information at all. Also, there were Civil War troops in this exact area because of the Battle of Roughsmill down by the Covered Bridge. And at the time that Cobb County looked at this rezoning proposal, they stipulated that there must be an archaeological survey completed before any building started on the property. Will the City of Mableton make the same stipulation? To me, well, I don't understand why the city managers have the right to decide on the purchase of these properties without any consideration for abutting residents or for any residents of Mableton. And to me, there seems like a lot of, a great lack of transparency here.
I'm Hope Roper. I'm Hope Roper. I live in District Four. I'm a mom of two, and it is extremely difficult for me to get to these meetings. But tonight, I felt like enough was enough and dragged my children away from their summer activities so I could be here tonight. And there are many others just like me who are dissatisfied with all the legislation you are passing, who can't come out and carve out the time to make it to these meetings. I do not understand how a city that was voted in on a city light model is now finding it okay to take on more and more expenses without solutions to where the money is coming from. Mableton did not even bring in the full revenue that was shared in the assessment of the city light model to prove the city cost would be covered without raising taxes. Then you all approved a maxed-out budget before you even went to the negotiating table for county services. Now we have a $9 million cost to cover as a city, and you have not informed the public how you are going to cover that cost. And tonight, you want to vote on a $6.7 million bond for a land project that is not necessary whatsoever. You have blown right past the city light model, and you are beginning to look like any other government agency, one that has their own agenda, who tries to vote legislation in before the general public can educate themselves and just expects everyone to fall in line and be happy they got a new pretty park when their taxes go up exponentially. I am here to tell you that how you're running our city is not okay. You are not being upfront or transparent. As a stay-at-home mom, I do not set our monthly budget without consulting my husband. It would be dishonoring and disrespectful for me to expect him to work, sacrifice, and to provide every cost that I deem necessary. So please tell me, why do you think is okay to sign up for more and more expenses without consulting the hard-working families in your city who are going to foot the bill for all this debt in the end?
Good evening. Denny Wilson, District Two. I did a little research today on URAs because I was trying to figure out why you guys were creating this urban redevelopment authority. And I was told that the reason you're doing it is because the county can, I mean, the city cannot borrow bond money. You have to do it through an authority, and that's why you guys are doing this. My thing is the additional taxes, and you, and I know, Mayor Orange, you keep saying that no additional taxes are going to be derived from this URA adventure. But people were told the same thing when the city was created, that there will be no new taxes, that they will be able to run this city on the amount, I think, 14 million that was included in the feasibility study. But my question to you guys is, if there's not going to be a tax increase put on the citizens from this, where is the money going to come from? Are you guys going to pull it out of hat? I mean, the money's got to come from somewhere. I mean, because you can't just come and purchase land at the cost that you guys are purchasing it and tell us that the burden of this purchase is not going to fall on the backs of the taxpayers. I mean, I told you guys the last meeting when I was here. What you're doing is you're taxing the citizens even before we get out the stall. I mean, this has to be paid for some type of way. And then, like Heidi said, to come in here tonight without any pictures and you want to vote on something that we have never seen. I mean, that's like you buying a house, somebody, a real estate agent calling you up and saying, hey, purchase this house that you've never seen. I mean, so how do you expect us to shake our heads and agree to this and we've never seen it? And I stand with you guys when you're right. I stand with you wholeheartedly when you guys are right. But when you're wrong, I cannot stand with you. I mean, I, I just cannot. So can you tell us where the money's going to come from? If there's no tax increase involved, no money that's going to be passed on to the citizens, then tell us how you're going to purchase this at a tune of 6.7 million and it not be passed on to the taxpayers? I really would love an answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I, do you have something, Madam?
No, I was just going to say, it sounds to me like maybe everyone has not reviewed the plan and the plan specifics.
That's an understatement, ma'am.
So, we've asked, while you were talking, we've asked if our tech people here can help us put the plan up on the Proctor. Now, if you have access to the internet and you go to the city's website and the agenda, the plan is in there. It's been in there since the agenda was published last week. So if you want to take this time now to pull it up, I would take this time on your phones or your devices. No, I'm, no, you don't.
Ma'am?
No, we are pulling it up for you. We are definitely going to pull it up for you. What I'm saying is, is that if you would like to, while you're at your seat, better visually review the plan, then you also have the opportunity during this brief break while we pull it up for you. So this is just for people, everyone in here may not have perfect eyesight. So if you want to look at your device on your phone, you can pull it up. But to me, I think one of the solutions would be to just pull up the plan and for people who have not had the opportunity to access the agenda, to review it, to have the time now to look at what the plan entails.
That's not true. It was put up late last night. I was looking for it. It was not us. Initially, you go to the library and it says that this bond resolution is going to be backed by equitable taxes, which means property has both been exhausted ideas. So to say that it's not going to be paid for is securing that bond with those words within the document.
Well, those are two separate issues. One, access to the plan. Well, I mean, we can only handle one at a time, and that's access to the plan and putting it up so you can actually see the plan. But I get that you're also talking about the financing. I get that. I looked, I personally looked at the agenda last week, and the plan was up. I don't know if there was a technical malfunction, Susan. Are you aware of any?
There, no.
Issues with?
No.
Let, let me, let me say, let me say two things, first of all. Number one, I do apologize for those for not having it up on the screen. We should have it up here because we do have it in a plan that was there, and you can see it now. So I, I was not aware that we would not have that prepared and on the screen to talk through. That also has the pictures that was utilized, that were taken of the property so we can, everyone can be clear about what we saw and why it was deemed blighted in certain matter. Number two, I do want to be clear when we talk about the aspect of, once we publish this, the items that are there, this item, this plan right here was in our civic clerk platform. And that is where we share information, not only amongst ourselves, but also with the community about what will be discussed at the council meeting. There has been updates as it relates to the bond transaction and the bond amount because we have been in discussion with our bond council, with our attorneys, and the bank to make sure we get the best rate possible. So those discussions have been ongoing. But the plan itself and what was presented out there has been out there since this meeting was, was placed out there. So this part has not changed. Thank you, ma'am. So once this was put out there, the information has been out there. This is not net new as of last night. We've had this out there. We've had it out there for ourselves as well as for our constituents to see. But again, apologies for not having it up here earlier. At this point in time, I do want to make sure that.
But to be clear, this is the plan about the area you're purchasing and the blight, not what you're going to take action on. Is this 407 pages? So I'm looking for like, what is the thing we're taking, what we're doing in these spaces?
So we, so if, if you want others to hear you, you can step up.
There's a, there's.
He's doing like.
Yeah, yeah. I think I got what you're saying, but we can flip through this.
Apologies. I know we can't go through the entire plan here because it's, the, the agenda, the regular meeting is 407 pages. But the plan shows the parcels, the conditions. Does it clearly state what we are doing with these spaces, what I was commenting on?
It does not.
Because I don't see that in here.
It does not.
There's a section in here that says project specifics. I know it's very, very vague, but it did say to establish a passive pocket park and/or other recreational facilities and redevelopment opportunities, which is very vague, I understand.
I think, I think we're just looking for commitment, or at least from my perspective, as I know I've already shared, commitment to those because we know that URA does not prescribe that we take those specific actions.
So our URA plan is specifically for those, and that is what we expect to use this land for, absolutely. I don't know who's in control of the.
Well, so we don't have a clicker. That's what I was just asking, unfortunately. But keep in mind that we are using, we're at the mercy right now. That's part of the reason you need property. You're at the mercy of using someone else's facility, and we don't have the technology that it sounds like you would prefer, and that's more sophisticated equipment, but we can. I've asked Allison if you could, if I say flip, if you'll flip, and she's agreed to do that.
Tell what page.
Well, we can, we're just going to flip and go through, and I'll, I'll just briefly go through.
Are you going to go through everything?
Um, if, if you want to go through.
I, I want to make sure we address some of the concerns. Part of that Councilwoman Oladipo just read verbatim. But also to the point of the photos, because there seemed to be some question about people who walk the land. I, two areas, I want to show where the areas are visually so we can see the two areas, and then.
So there are photos in here, too.
And then specifically talk about the, show the photos.
It's the photographic evidence, which is, so which, where did you want to start, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would say, keep in mind, too, that this plan does not say, this, what this plan does not do is it does not say that we are going to put a Sugar Hill on this parcel. Because before that comes, there's going to have to be way greater discussions, developers coming to the table, public input sessions. So we are not approving a Sugar Hill or anything to that capacity through this. This is the approval of certain areas where land can be acquired, where the city has designated that such acquisition may be a better use than the way it's being used right now.
Is that a, a trashy area, something that looks like?
Well, we can get to some of the photos.
Oh, dang, I haven't seen that.
So when you think about trashy, blight is not that, you know, I have, you know, a drug house next to me or I have, you know, someone with, that's not just blight. Blight is undeveloped infrastructure. It's property that is not being used to its highest and best use. It's property that, like, if you, if you go to the area, we can, I can, I can describe some of these photos. They're, they're in.
And we can't, what they're supposed to do on our property?
Sir, this, this is not what we're doing. If this is, if this is a land acquisition, then it's a land acquisition. We're not telling, I mean, that's.
Well, you would, you as the resident would own the property. So you would be, so you wouldn't, you'd be telling yourself. So it's not like the city's going to.
They're going to give somebody free all of their property for their property.
Jeff.
Well, the, the person, first, for the city to do anything, the owner would have to be willing to, to sell the property because it's not a condemnation. The city's not taking anyone's property. If they're willing to sell, then the property would be owned by the city, and the city could make the determination, we're going to put a park here. We want to invite developers to tell us, what are your proposals? What are your ideals? We want to invite the county. What do you suggest? We want to invite the public. What do you want to see here recreationally? Do you want to see soccer? Do you want to see football, baseball? If you don't have assets, capital assets, then you don't have those opportunities, and you miss those opportunities. So the purpose of this plan is to plant seeds to where you have those opportunities, either through public-private partnerships, either through future funding that comes through, through your sploß, your park sploß. There are going to be multiple opportunities where you're going to get revenue that comes through that goes to all cities within the state of Georgia. And if you have no capital assets, meaning if you don't have property to develop this on, then you don't have those opportunities. So this plan highlights certain areas that may be ripe for those opportunities. But what is, what it does not do is it does not take you to the point of saying that we are definitely going to put a Sugar Hill here because, like I said, that's going to take way more public input. That's going to take bringing way more people to the table. So this is just laying the foundation. We are not at somewhere where you might be four to five years from now, or three years from now, or two years from now.
You know, the other properties y'all got, that y'all bought over on, on Mableton Parkway, Pocket Drive. Now, the reason for y'all getting them, I remember it was, one of them had tires dumped on it. That was, you know, the reason. And, you know, I understood that, and, you know, there's some bad shit, but I just don't understand this property. I just don't. I walked it today, ma'am, personally, and I didn't say nothing. I mean, y'all can say what you want. I walked the park.
Well, we can show some of the photos. Let's look at some of the photos. So you are a area, if, if you could go back, Allison, to the first photo. So what that photo demonstrates by designating that as an area, that photo demonstrates that the council has looked at that and has said, we want our residents to see something different than this. Because if your local government does not change that demographic or that dynamic, then you may wake up for the next 10 years, and that's what you see. And some people may want to see that, but this council has determined that we don't want residents to see this for the next 10 years. And there may be opportunities for us to redevelop these areas. Can you go to the next page? So like, if you drive up and down the corridor, that's what you're going to see right now. If you can go to the next slides, that's what you're going to see. If you go to this, this is part of the. Yep, it's, it's part of, this is part of URA Area One, and it is a different parcel. That's correct. This is 60. Yes, you know exactly what I'm talking about. This is 6084 Mableton Parkway.
Was that, did that lie to you?
Well, no. So this agreement, well, I don't want to put that. Well, no, so this agreement, well, I don't want to put that information out. This agreement does not commit you or the city to purchasing that parcel. So that is, there is nothing in any of the documentation that's on the agenda that commits the acquisition. What it does is it highlights, this may be an area in the future that we may want to redevelop. The city may say, you know what? We don't like this area. We're going to back away from it completely. And they have the discretion to do that. But at least this gives them the ability to isolate this area and look into it. And if you remove it from the plan, then the city can't do anything to this area. So it's not saying that they're going to purchase this. This plan doesn't say that the city's going to purchase this. This plan, there's nothing in any of the documents that says that the city is going to purchase anything that you've seen. It just gives the city the ability to say that, you know what? We think that we can make something here that's better than what exists here now. So if you, if you go to the next slide, uh, like, this is some of the Silver Comet parcels. Assuming, let's just say they would sell their property, instead of, when you go to the Silver Comet area and see that, you might see something different. You might see a multi-purpose soccer facility. You might see a multi-purpose passive, or you might see a passive park. You might see, all of that is going to take citizen engagement, citizen input. You, we are not at that step. There is, if the council, it would shock my conscience if the council today was able to put into a plan that said, this is what you're going to see, because that takes multiple people coming to the table.
That's not true. We know exactly what's going to go on that parcel in Area 2.
Well, I don't know that. I have, I don't know what the council's going to put in that area. I don't know if the council, there are 20 different things the council can put there. But what I'm saying is, is that it's my opinion that before whatever goes, goes there, that there will be public engagement, that there will be conversations with developers. There will be conversations with people who may fund or partner with the city. So we, the, the council is not at that point yet. This is just identifying that this is an area, when we drive up and down this street, the preference would be to see something else other than this. And if you could scroll down, there's, I think, a couple more photos. It appeared to me, just based on the photos, that people were abandoning cars. There's an abandoned vehicle in one of the photos. There's trash. If you look really closely, like, I went to Google Maps, I also went to the Tax Assessor map. If you scroll in very closely, you will see that there are multiple trees that are falling. It looks like they're on top of wire lines. I don't know if there's power issues in this area. Maybe the power is functioning perfectly with the way, the way it's set up here. But if you scroll down some more, so, I mean, you know, when you drive up and down this street, this is what you do see right now. And you see there, you can see the, you can see a power line that has a tree on it right there. If you look at the very top of that first photo, you see how the power line that goes across is making a V instead of going straight across. And then there's also a tree that looks like it fell right behind the power line. So these are certain areas that the council does have the opportunity to redevelop. I don't know if that's the extent. Are there any more photos? So if you read through the plan, I don't know if you have enough time tonight, but the plan does talk about, you know, the project. It talks about the areas. What's going to come here, like I said, that probably will take more discussion. That's going to take, you know, public engagement. It's going to take pulling people who may want to finance. The, the Mableton Council, a couple of months ago, personally walked the entirety of Sugar Hill to talk about potential public-private partnerships that could be brought to, potentially to the city of Mableton. If you don't have land, if you don't have capital assets to pull people to, no developer's going to pay you much attention. What you may get is you may get a developer who already has their own mind made up of what they want to see there, and they may purchase the land themselves. And if they purchase the land, then they're going to put there whatever the zoning code allows them to put there. And then we're going to have people upset because they're exercising their rights under the zoning code to potentially put a gas station, or a tire shop, or a chicken wing establishment. By purchasing capital, and I'm not, I have nothing against gas stations, chicken shops. I don't want to make anyone mad, but whatever it is. Whatever it is, and I hope I didn't offend anyone, nobody wants oversaturation. So it's not the substance of what's sold there, it's oversaturation. And that's what you see frequently with, with municipal or community development. You see oversaturation. Most people don't want a gas station every 10 feet. Most people don't want a tire shop. They don't want, they don't want the same thing every 10 feet. But this gives the city to have better leverage and control over what developer goes there. And the city can choose. If we don't like your development proposal, it's not going here because our residents own the land. Our residents will determine what goes here, and it just gives you the opportunity. So you're not at that point yet. This is just the preliminary stages of targeting the areas where the city may do future developments that benefit the community.
Yeah, I think this is part of what's confusing us is, like, if there are developers coming to the city and saying, well, we're interested in putting this or that in South Cobb because we think it, you know, South Cobb is developing, like, why does the city have to be in the middle? I mean, like, can't you just say to the developer, actually, there's, here's a whole list of properties, and you can go talk to the people who own them, and just, like, why do we have to be in the middle of it? And also, you're talking about having control over what goes there. Like, I thought, I thought zoning and code enforcement was part of why we were getting a city? So like, if it's already zoned for houses, then, like, you can't put a gas station or a tire lot there, right?
I'm in District 3. My name's Lamar Scotty, and I may not be popular after I make my statement. But I don't look for popularity. I'm giving you my thoughts and clarity on what I witnessed since I walked through the door. We elected these people to run the city for us, to make the best decisions for us because you can't have 80,000 people in a room trying to make decisions for you on land purchases, what happens with revenue, whether you raise taxes, and all those kinds of things. So it's kind of a moot point with all of us here tonight. You got a very small segment of people that exist in this county that are here tonight. Many of the folks who voted for the city are not here. And so I'm not here to say, we need to know everything you know when you know it, and we need to handcuff you, tie you up, and free you up to do your job, which you are elected for. That's not what they're doing here. This meeting has been stymied and come to a standstill because people are moaning about one or two issues. Now, what happens with those parcels of land in the future? Should they make a decision to buy them and not take them through eminent domain? That's to be decided in the future. However, when you come upon attractive pieces of property, when you can get those properties, the more assets a city has and can sell and can build on in the future, the better. I'm in the business of clearing blight. If you look at the property on the corner of Green Road and Mableton Parkway, there used to be oil chemical barrels buried there. There were two cars buried there, stumps and all kinds of metal, which I cleaned up, which now, if you look at it, 96 townhomes are going there. What this city needs, yeah, we love parks for our kids to play and have outings and stuff like that. But given our financial situation right now, we need revenue enhancement kinds of situations and businesses be developed in this, this county, I mean, this city. We are no longer under the protection of Cobb County. We now are on this island by ourselves, and we've got to raise money ourselves creatively. And if you tie their hands before you, and you don't even know what's happening when they go into executive session to discuss real estate, personnel, and whatever, whatever. Those probably things that they are sitting there wanting to say but can't say. So I'm not, I mean, I'm all in favor of transparency, but sometimes you can't just yet. I say, if we elected them, let them run this city. If they screw up, they screwed up. I don't see you down in Washington marching about what Trump is doing. And that's a bunch of money, all of our money. Okay? So, 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 look, I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about administrations running government and spending our tax dollars. We pay the taxes, they, in effect, decide what to do. We can weigh in on that, but we can't stop them from doing their jobs. Look, I'm, look, look, I'm paying taxes as well. And you talk about senior citizens not being able to do that? I'm 73 years old. I'm way into senior citizenship. All seniors are not eating cat food and whatever. So, so I don't want to hear the moaning all the time. So again, I'm not, I'm not here to be popular. I'm up here to give you some truth. If we're going to be a city and we're going to grow and not be a little sleepy town anymore, it's going to cost money at some point. The mayor just said a few times that we're going to have 0.000 taxes. We're going to hold them to that. And guess what? We may not be able to. There may be things coming around the corner that he doesn't see yet. So that's my, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Ms. Nash?
Brenda Nash, District 3. I can appreciate your thoughts because you buy land and you develop land, and you're a developer. So yes, I can see why you would want the city to buy land that could be developed and be part of it. With that said, I appreciate that you have money to pay taxes abundantly. But not everyone in Mableton does. And we're not going to make the money that you might make if one of his property sells. We did elect these people to represent us, but we also asked them for transparency, to let us know. And they all ran on the platform, they wanted to do what their constituents wanted. So if they, if we're asking them to make decisions without asking us what we want, then we're not doing what they ask us to do and what they were asked to be elected to do. So I just say they, we still need to have a voice. And if, if there's wealthy people out there that wants to buy all this property, that, if you don't have money, it's, it's great to have, if we have lots of money, I'd say, yes, let's go buy the property. But if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. And you can say 450,000 is a drop in the bucket, but it's a drop in the bucket that you've got to start have building up to fit to pay the bills. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. At this point in time, we're at time for our public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to quickly speak? Sir, you're recognized.
Good evening. My name's Christopher Brock, and I live at 156 Mattson Run here in Mableton. I think it's District 3. And if the council believes that intergovernmental agreements will promote economic development and cure blight in these designated areas, I would just ask that any partnerships that they, that you all do engage in, especially if it is private, that they're paying their fair share of taxes, and that we minimize any tax abatements in the term of the bond, so that we're recovering that investment as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, Madam Clerk, we are going to close the public hearing on this matter, which is 12C. Thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone that came up here to speak, whether you spoke in favor of it or against it. The important part was, as a council and as a body, is that we continue to receive public input, and public hearings is one of the ways of doing that. So thank you for taking part in that. With that being said, Madam Clerk, I'm going to move us on, closing the public hearing. And counsel, we will move forward now to Item 12D. Item 12D is a consideration approval of the amended City of Mableton URA plan. Again, this is to amend the plan that was just shown on the screen. Being said, do I have a motion?
We're on 12D, right?
12, we're on 12D. Consideration approval of amended for the URA plan. Counsel, once again, I'll ask. No, at this point in time, we entertain a motion for the consideration approval of the amended City of Mableton URA plan. So the plan that we just saw.
Oh, so I'll make a motion to consider the approval of amending the City of Mableton URA plan.
Thank you, motion made. Do I have a second?
I have. I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilman Davis. Counsel, any further discussion on this matter?
Has there been consideration of changing the boundaries to take off Area 2?
All right, motion's been made already by Councilman Ferguson.
It's discussion, so he can amend the motion if he wants it. We're discussing it. I'm asking, is there any interest in discussion on changing the boundaries of our URA to, to take off the Silver Comet parcel? But we could still keep all of the, the other parcels that are in the proposed boundaries?
Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Any other discussion, counsel? Here and then, I would call the question. All those in favor of consideration approval of the amended City of Mableton URA plan made by Councilman Ferguson, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say no.
No.
Please note that the consideration has been approved by the four to three with Councilwoman Hindon, Councilwoman Ogg, and Councilwoman Oladapo in opposition. Thank you for that, counsel. Now move to Item 12E, which is consideration approval of the bond resolution and intergovernmental agreement with the City of Mableton. Again, going back to the URA meeting, this is the actual bond resolution. Counsel, under your other hat of URA commissioners, you were prized by our, by our Director of Finance, as well as a bond attorney and our city, city attorney, to the bond resolutions and intergovernmental agreement for the city at this point in time. I'd entertain a motion to approve this bond resolution and intergovernmental agreement with the City of Mableton.
So Mayor, can we talk about this one just for a minute?
I would like to entertain a motion. If we don't have a motion, then there's nothing to talk about.
Okay, I make a motion for the approval of the bond resolution and intergovernmental agreement with the City of Mableton.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Do you have a second?
I'll suck up.
Thank you. Motion's been made and duly seconded. At this point in time, we'll have a discussion. I'll yield the floor to Councilman Ferguson.
So as I read through this document, I still see that there, I don't necessarily know that it's completely filled out, so we know all of the terms of this. So for instance, Exhibit A and B are the form of intergovernmental lease agreement, and the winning bid is Exhibit A, but we don't have that information in here. Do we need that before we have a resolution that we're going to enter into? Because it says Section 12 effective date. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. But how do we adopt something and we don't have all the information?
So this resolution, the, so the form that you're talking about is just a template. It's just showing you the substantial substance of the IGA. But it would give us the ability to move forward with putting in the rate information, with putting in the, as we approach closing, on any parcels, we would put in legal descriptions, et cetera. So it just gives us the ability to make those additions consistent with the plan.
So again, my question becomes, why would I agree to something and I don't have that information yet?
Well, but we do have the winning bid, and that was true, as I can disclose that. We do have the rate information, and that was the rate sheet that was shared with the council.
Would we like to have bond counsel speak to a typical transaction, why that may not be?
Yeah, and if we could, Doug, Doug, are you still here?
He may not, I don't see him.
Selby? Okay, it looks like he might have stepped out after the URA meeting.
So do you want to, I, I think you can ask the question by talking through the transaction process and when that information would be there, because I think the counsel makes a good question. But I know even in layman's terms of purchasing a house, there is some information that's not there until it's time for closing. not there until it's time for closing. So do you want to elaborate as to why?
Right.
Because I don't want to get the perception that we're approving something that we don't have all the information for yet, if it's standard practice that there are things that will still be added to this agreement prior to any purchase of anything.
Okay, so what specific, so it sounded like you said the winning bid, and the winning bid was Truist, and there was another item that you mentioned, I think you said?
Exhibit B is the form of intergovernmental lease agreement?
Yes, so that is actually the form that's included in the agenda. So the, the form of the IGA is included in the agenda. So that is just an exhibit attachment to the resolution. That is what we would file with the Superior Court. Because keep in mind that this process, there are a lot of steps that goes beyond tonight. We then go to the process where we involve the district attorney, we have to get signatures from the DA's office, we have to get signatures from the assigned judge's office, we have to get signatures from the court clerk, there is an entire validation process that has to go on where we're going to get information input. So this commits us to the plan, to the financing amount that's been approved by the council, to the winning bid, which was Truist, but it allows us to take this form of this agreement and bring it to the next step to the Superior Court so that we can now validate.
I have a question, are we allowed to disclose what the city will actually be paying for this bond, or is that?
Yeah, that's, that's public information.
No, I'm saying in terms of the amount, the?
Yes, you can disclose the amount of the bond, you can.
No, not the amount of the bond, the amount of payment we'll be paying every six months.
Yes, you can disclose that too. Finance can come up and, and talk and say what the annual or the monthly payment would be. That's all public information.
Yes, can we do that? That was the 450,000?
No.
$450,000.
But it's twice, it's every six months, right?
We have to amend our budget in order to make these payments to cover the entire debt service of the entire URA, correct?
Yeah, please, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay, would you restate your question that I can answer it specifically?
I had asked if we could disclose exactly how much the city will be paying every six months for this particular bond.
Yes, so with the bond issue, this is a typical bond issue where you have semi-annual payments. Payments will be made in June and December of each year, each fiscal year. The payments that are laid out will be interest, let me get to that page.
And disclose the rate as well?
Interest only each December, and then interest and principal payments each July, or June. So those payments amount to approximately, to keep debt level so that the city has an easy way to budget it, it's approximately 453 to 57 each year. Because as you know, mortgage payments, principal goes up, interest goes down, and it keeps it around $453,000 each year. So you have two debt service payments in June and December equally for interest, and then one principal payment in June each year.
Excuse me?
The city will be paying that to the URA to pay for the bonds.
Balance budget.
Yes, and what it will do, again, as I mentioned earlier, we budget very conservatively on revenues. So what we will do to offset this debt service payment, there are revenues that we did not budget for because we did not know what they would be coming in at. Now we know the projections of what that is, and that increase in revenue offsets this debt service payment, which allowed us to do this with no effect to city services. We don't levy any taxes.
When you do.
I can't, we do not.
When you do, because there is going to be a tax.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think maybe I'm unclear. So is each payment 450,000, the one in June and the one in December?
It is 450 approximately in the whole year.
In the whole year, okay.
So I don't want to read a whole amortization table, because like I said, the payments are going to vary each period, but for example, we have a coming up interest payment of 118,000 in December, and then in June, we will have a $5,000 principal and 176,000 interest in that. Now that equates lower because this is a prorated, this is not a full year payment. We are issuing a bond not for a full year, so the next year we'll have that more level 450. Okay.
And I think the mayor also asked the interest rate and the term.
Yes, so this is 5.25, it is a fixed rate with Truist, and it matures in June 1st of 2045, so it's a 20-year bond. We do have the ability to prepay, so if interest rates fall, which we're all hoping they do, the city would have the ability to refund and interest and get even lower interest on these payments.
And how much do we currently pay annually for the first URA?
Excuse me?
How much do we pay annually for the first one?
The first one is, I believe that's reflected in the schedule, yes, that's 513. So it ranges between 512 and 516, so around 513, 514 average per year. That is again, per year.
Thank you.
So, counsel, is there any other questions for the Director, while she's up here?
No? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Counsel, at this point in time, is there any other discussion, questions, or comments about this motion that's on the table?
And we have to get, oh, sorry. And we have to get something done by?
So Truist is committed to this rate by August 19th. So that means that there is a lot of work that would need to be done by August 19th. That's, like I said, that's the signatures and collaboration with the district attorney's office, with the judge's office. Because that is such a short time period, like we can't even mail letters. Because if you mail a letter, they may not get it for a week or a week and a half. So we are literally going to be emailing, walking up to people's offices, and letting them know that we are in the process of validation. So if, if you can get Truist to commit to potentially keeping the rate and giving you an extension, that's something that, you know, you can see if Ed can work with them on that, but that would be a request that we would have to ask them if you need more time.
And we do have noticed this.
What's the likelihood of that, do we know?
Oh, goodness, I'm trying to remember what Ed, because I asked Ed, just with the correspondence, and so I asked Ed that question. I can, do you want me to call him now? He's available on standby if you, if you want that answer. He, his general consensus was, I think he said it would look bad, in the sense that Truist has gone out of their way to meet the 16th deadline, they've even lowered the rate, and that if we go to them and tell them, you know, we're still not going to accept this, that it, I don't want to put words in his mouth, do you want me to? That was his general consensus with me, that it would, it would, he gave it a negative connotation. But I can call him and get him on the phone, and he is, he is on standby to answer questions that you may have if you want me to.
And I know he did say he went back to get a lower rate, because I mentioned that earlier with the audit that we have, to get a lower rate for this. So Truist is definitely being amiable in working with us and providing an additional lower rate.
Yeah, he did tell me that it was very difficult, that they were being very gracious to go to the rate that they went to.
Thank you. Any other question, counsel?
At what point can we disclose what the plan is? Like, once this is approved, like the purpose for keeping it concealed is to not ruin a real estate transaction. Once this is done, is there any reason that we can't let people know what the plan is?
Well, at this point, because you are so in the early stages, when you say the plan, like, do you mean like, what is actually going to go on the property? Because I don't think we know that yet.
I think we do.
Well, I, so I'm just saying, you might be at a stage where you're probably not at that point, where you can make the determination, because?
I think, I almost feel like, I wish we would, I feel like we could get more buy-in. If people just, they just want to know what their money is buying, what it is we're doing, you know, and like, tell them what the benefit of what it is we're trying to do for them.
Counsel, we, I could say, we do not have anything.
I know you disagree.
I don't disagree, I'd simply, we're not at that stage yet, and we don't have anything to say concretely what we're going to do with any of these locations. I think it's, it's all somewhat so up there. We have some great ideas and things we'd like to bring forward.
We can't even share the idea?
I think.
When we did the first two parcels?
We can't share what we're doing?
We don't know what we're going to put there either, so I'm not sure what, what you're going to say. I guess that's where I'm confused.
No, I, I'm, we are, there's a reason that real estate personnel litigation is done in executive session.
Right, to protect the interest of the city.
So if your, so if your question is, after this, can we come forward to the public about any and all ideas? Absolutely. But we cannot do so about any public-private partnership, about any proposed set of lands prior to us being able to.
So at some point, though, like, we do want their feedback, do we not? Like, that was the statement that our attorney made.
Absolutely, 100%, absolutely.
Well, I can tell you, one of, there has been a proposal that has been, I will say it's in the universe, because I haven't seen it on paper, and I actually communicated to the lawyers that, look, you know, I'm excited that you're excited to bring this to the council, but you need something tangible. We need to know, okay, who would you bring in partnership with this? Who would you, what would be the request? What, would you want mixed-use retail? Would you want strict recreation? There needs to be a level of specificity. So I know that we have interests, I know that 100%, but as far as sufficient information that's been provided to the council, to where the council can make a determination of yes or no?
Not there yet.
I don't think you're there yet, but that's the discretion of the council. If you think that you are there as far as being able to present a proposal, then you can do that at any meeting. And also keep in mind that any property that you purchase, by law, before you can purchase that property, you do have to publicly vote. So the public will know that you are putting property under contract with whatever you purchase, because while you can talk about real estate in executive session, and the feasibility and the logistics around its acquisition, you cannot vote to acquire it in executive session. So there will be no acquisition of property in Mableton, at least, under my advisement, moving forward, that you would, behind closed doors, vote to move forward without having a public vote after that discussion.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion, counsel?
Ma'am, my thing is, it's not even about what is going on the property. I think we've heard from a lot of people tonight, and we've heard that there are concerns. And the elephant in the room is, we have not even addressed how we're going to pay for police services. And I, and I just think our priorities must be aligned with what the residents are concerned about. I think that is the whole point of hearing from them. Can I finish?
Counsel, welcome.
And, because I just, I think it's important for us to hear from them, and we did. And we just have to be really understanding of the fact that people are very concerned about how these things are going to be paid for, and we should figure that out first because timing is everything. And while I am not against, you know, addressing blight and revitalizing Mableton and owning lands for capital projects, timing is everything. We have not, we have pending things to discuss, to figure out, and I just cannot justify going into this amount of debt for these purposes at this moment. It's just not good timing. I mean, I think we've heard our constituents, and I appreciate everyone's coming forth with their concerns and being forthright. We have our staff, our leadership in place, they're experts, we've relied on our financial director as well as our city manager, who've laid, they've laid out the numbers for us. And we've asked time and time again, you know, are we fiscally responsible, right? Are we, are we where we need to be to be able to make more of an informed decision to move forward? We're at the beginning of this process, and so it's a bit premature to rush to judgment to say that we're going to do a particular thing when we're not even there yet. So we're still having, having to walk through it, nuance it, figure out, you know, what that's going to look like, right, in terms of our go-forward strategy. So although I certainly understand what you're saying, I share the same sentiments when it comes to, okay, obviously, we have this, you know, pending fee for police, I get it, I understand that. And I think all of us up here want to be fiscally responsible and transparent. So I really want to dispel this myth that says that we're doing something to follow so we're not being transparent. There's a process that we have to go through. And so we go back, we go in executive session, we have these conversations, we look at, you know, all of our various different options, and we're still in that process. And so I don't, I don't want to negate that, and I don't want to take anything away from those that have spoken. We hear you, we hear you loud and clear. And, you know, we will have engagement from the public, right? We want, we want, we want to have that, right? It's a symbiotic relationship. And so I just, I just want to level set there, just to be clear that we're not just jumping to a decision. Yeah, the big, the big question is, why now? Why do we have to do this now? We can buy land anytime, but we have people who are concerned about pending services that we need to pay for. Why now?
I would simply say, Councilwoman, I would, hey, Jeff, sir, 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 public comment, we will have public comment in just a moment, and I'm, if you have not signed up yet, please, because I know you have a lot to say, we respect what you have to say. We're trying to get through this, this vote, but please, we want to make sure you have time to public comment to have more what you want to say. Fair enough?
I'm sorry, ma'am. When you're finished, I'd like to speak.
No, please, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. I've been trying to be quiet and kind of take everything in, you know, because I usually like to be very measured with, you know, what I have to say. I think the issue for me, and why this is really difficult, I work for lawyers, and I understand how they put things, what we don't know, we don't, we don't, we're not sure. And I'm not trying to be facetious, but for me, what I do know for sure is that we know the motivation that we have for looking at particular properties. Can we say for certain without a shadow of a doubt that X, Y, and Z is going to be on it? No, we can't, just like we can't, you know, we don't know what tomorrow's going to bring. However, we know what our impetus is for buying this land, and it's a little difficult for me to sit here and hear like, well, we don't know, we don't, you know, I don't know, I just kind of feel like it's kind of playing a little bit with the truth, for lack of a better phrase, that may not be the best way to say it. Our constituents are concerned, and I think for me, I've heard the concern, and even in our executive sessions, we have brought up, you know, and I know a lot of times it's easier to say, this is just a small subset of people who come in, and it doesn't really necessarily reflect what everyone else is feeling. However, when people show up and they talk, that subset to me is a very strong subset because they are interested enough, you know, that they're willing to take their time and come and voice, you know, their concern or their desire, what have you. What I also know for sure is between all of the parcels that we are contemplating purchasing and what we have already purchased, we're looking at almost a million dollars each year, you know, in payments that we have to make. And I understand that currently, you know, our, our balance is great, but just like we got hit with a bill, you know, from Cobb County unexpectedly to some extent, we don't know what's coming in the future. And so from my perspective, I feel like measured decisions and caution is advisable because in the end, we have to keep coming back to the same people to, to pay oftentimes. Like, when I met, the first thing that's thought of, well, we're just going to have to levy, you know, levy a fee, or we have to, you know, put a millage rate or, or something like that. And so I just, my concern is, do we need this property right now? Especially when we take into consideration that we have two parcels that we already have and we haven't done anything with. So I'm not certain about the urgency. So I'm not certain about the urgency to get into a $6.7 million bond at this particular point.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman. You know, I would, I would say this, a million dollars a year. I've lived in this community for a long time. We have begged, begged Cobb County to spend and invest a million dollars a year in our community. This is what we've wanted. We've wanted to have investment in our city, so we could build, so we could grow, so we could get rid of the blight, so we could bring opportunities here. How many times have many of us, many of us, and some of you out there tonight as well, have asked time and time again, can we get certain things on, on our list, right? So we could address this city. So a million dollars a year may sound a lot, but by God, if I can spend and invest a million dollars a year into this city, if we're not willing to invest in the city, who is? Right, so I'm happy in the fact that we're looking to invest in, in Tommy, and anybody that's involved in real estate does understand that real estate usually is a sense of urgency around timing. Nothing's getting cheaper, and the land that we're able to purchase at a bond rate that we have all been advised is a good rate, with a partner in Truist that's becoming a better and better partner to us, is something that, you know, if we're not willing to bet on ourselves, who's willing to bet on us? Lastly, I'll say this, yeah, we've already purchased some property, and I've said this before, we are the 12th largest city in the state of Georgia. The 12th largest. And how much land do we own? When I talk about land acquisition strategy, it is to better position us for the future, so we'll have better opportunities than what we're able to build, so we collectively, not only as a council, but as a city, can determine what our future looks like. If we don't own this land and it's other people do, they determine what gets built. All we're looking for is an opportunity to control our own destiny. And for those that voted for the city, this is what was voted for. And those that did not, I hope can see the benefits of why we're going to vote there. We've heard from our Director of Finance, who have said to us, we can afford this. We absolutely can, and it will not disrupt any services. And we do have future revenue streams that are coming to this city. And again, I will say that we are not in a position to have some of these discussions about what some of these other things forthcoming will be. But to invest in ourselves, to invest in our community, that is, that is a hallmark of what a city that truly cares is about. And I'm happy to stand in support of this. What comes and what gets built there, and what we decide as a community gets built there, we should do that as a community. But, but to give us the opportunity to move forward on this, to move forward with continuing to take advantage of opportunities that have presented themselves, I think, and this is my own opinion as mayor, I think we should go forward and support this measure.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I haven't been given an opportunity. I appreciate your vision, and I think we all want to invest in our community, and I think that is the goal long-term. But we also have to invest in the services that we, as a city, agreed to provide to our citizens, which we still haven't negotiated with the county. And we know, there's been, the county has disclosed an idea of what they're going to ask us.
I do wanna address the issue of transparency. Recently, there was quite a bit of controversy about a parcel that the Cobb County School District purchased at 440 Veterans Memorial Highway. And part of the complaint about that purchase was that it wasn't disclosed to the community. There wasn't any public input with the community about what would be put on that parcel. And there was a lot of backlash and cries even to the city council to do something. Could we have moved our URA boundaries to encompass that property and purchase it, and maybe have saved it from being a bus depot? You know, there was other options that could have been available, and that, it can't be changed now, and I understand that. The matter is, I'm still speaking.
We tried, that was part of the plan. We did try to do that.
Thank you. We haven't, I don't feel that we have adequately engaged our citizens. I feel like they're here tonight because there was some outreach to get them here, and they believe that if they came here and they spoke, that it would make a difference, and maybe they could have an impact on their community. There was some of the feedback that I heard from comments tonight was, you know, the concern about future costs. While, while right now, as we stand, do we have the budget to cover it? Yes, we could afford the trip to Europe, but the rent's due at the end of the month, and we know it's coming. So why would we go and spend this level at this time? I think in the future, when we, we know what our services are gonna cost, I think that's a, that's a great thing to do. I think it's, it's worth doing. You know, someone else made a statement about not wanting to minimize tax abatement. Does, does what theoretically planned do that? So that is, that is, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the council?
I'll just jump in here real quick and reiterate, I think, what citizens have said. What I heard was, if we can't afford it right now, then we shouldn't do it. What I heard was, there are issues with traffic and different things that we could possibly put on this parcel of land. I think that is, I, for one, am not married to any idea that I've heard so far. So I can't tell you specifically what's gonna go there. But I will say that as we consider it, then we need to be able to have conversations to make sure that you all are included in those conversations. And, you know, I see some shaking their head, saying no, but at the end of the day, I can't do anything without you. I can't do anything without your input. That's why we have public carings on things, that's why we do these sorts of things. But the purchase of land is still a conversation. This is simply talking about the bond that we would need to increase in order to do this. I also heard, again, that there was concerns about whether or not we could afford it. I go to the expert, and I ask the expert today, can we afford it? Looking forward, can we afford it? And if they tell me yes, then they tell me yes. Just like you are going to go to the expert to say, we can't afford it, you know, I know who's looking at the books, and they're not cooked, and they're, they're, it's, I got my answers that I needed today. And I, again, hear how it is that everybody in this, in the audience is speaking on it. But I want you to know that you put us into office for a reason to make these types of decisions. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Davis, you're recognized.
Okay, I was trying to be like Councilwoman Herndon, and I was trying to just be quiet. But like I said at the last city council meeting, decisions that we make here, they affect us as well as you. I've been a part of this community now for about 30 years. I've seen what it started out as, 30, about 30 years ago, what it looked like. And I've watched some slow, very, very, very slow progress. As the mayor said, this is an opportunity, and don't get me wrong, because just like you, I'm not a, and I hate when people call me a politician, because I'm not. I am a resident that happens to be in this position, and I am here to see that things work the way they should work, or at least have your voices heard, because living in South Cobb as long as I have, I know, I've been here long enough to know how it feels when your voice is not heard. I really do. And that is painful. Someone once said, the worst pain is that, the pain of being invisible. And I would be the last person to sit up here and act like you guys aren't, because I know that feeling. But I also know this too, that when we became a city, there were some things that, in order for the city to grow and thrive and be the city that we want it to be, that people voted for it to be, there are some things that are going to happen. Now, the mayor has said, you know, we have a zero mileage rate, voted for 23, 24, and this year. I would like to see that continue to happen. But I also would like to see things come to the city of Mableton that have not been here for so, so long. And some of the things that are going to have to happen is that, you know, no city can grow and thrive without land. That's a fact. I love trees, I'm originally from Mississippi, I love to fish, I love the country and all that kind of stuff. But at the same time, Mableton can't afford to remain as it was when I moved here. Mable can, cannot afford to look like it did in 1990. It can't afford to look like it did in 19, or really even 2000. It really can't. And if we're serious about this city, and if we're serious about this city being the best that it can be, with the 12th largest in the state, what do we really want Mableton to look like 10 years from now? I don't wanna see Magnolia Crossing still undeveloped 10 years from now. And how long has it been undeveloped? How long have those apartments been gone? And there's still, still nothing. It kinda galls me a bit, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say, it kinda galls me a bit that, you know, that's still the way it is. And yet, you know, I know, and believe me, I am not a rich man. I am not. But I do understand, and let me go back a bit, because I know how, I know in my district, I will say, some people call it problematic because of their crime and all this kind of stuff. But I remember the time when I had to work two and three jobs and go to school and could not make ends meet, even with all that. I understand that, and I have not forgotten. I have not forgotten. So when people talk about, you know, they're concerned about raised taxes and their expenses, I'm concerned about what happens to seniors, because I know they live on fixed incomes. And I know that it's not easy. And I would be the last to say, oh, this is raised taxes so that it's gonna make it harder for the seniors. Nobody got, nobody on this town's got elected to do that, with the desire to do that. But there are some things that are going to have to happen if we want this city to be what it should be for everybody. So all I'm saying is that, I hear you. Believe me, and if you're struggling, I've been there. And I can't say that I'm struggling, I'm not struggling now. But I know this, I know that the city of Mableton will thrive. I know that the city of Mableton will move forward. It will be far better than it has been, and even as it is right now. But there are some things that we're gonna have to do. And that does not mean that it's gonna cause people to suffer, lose their homes, or any of that. But like Councilwoman Herndon said, there are measured approaches, there are some systematic things that we have to do, we have to be strategic. Because I don't wanna be taxed out of Cobb County, I don't. And I know you don't either. But what are we going to do? We can come here and complain about blah, 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 and yell, maybe tell some things. We're not a perfect council. We're not. And I kinda take issue, there's, some people seem to kinda insinuate that, you know, maybe we're not, we're not quite honest. I don't believe nobody on this council is dishonest. And I take issue with anybody who would throw shade and say that somehow we're not. But again, we're not perfect. We are not perfect. But we will do, we will do what needs to be done. We'll make the decisions that need to be made. We need to hear from you, yes, we do. And my door is always open. Go to the website, ron dot davis at mableton.gov. Email me anytime you feel like it. Let me know what's going on. But see, I can't address anything if nobody says anything until it's time for a city council meeting and say, oh, when I'm mad about this, no. Let us know beforehand. And I'm willing to come out in my pickup truck and talk to you, or go out on your property and see what happens, because some of you folks know that I've been out there cleaning trash, doing all kinds of stuff. I've been in this neighborhood for, this community for 27 years. A lot of y'all already know what I do before, long before I got elected. Y'all saw me out in the community. And I'll continue to be out there picking up trash, whatever I need to do. But don't think, I just don't want you, none of you to think that we're up here just doing things for whatever fame or gain, or, I have no political ambitions, I really don't. So like I said before, I will not do anything or make any decision that I feel is gonna get me reelected if it's not the best one for the city. I will not. Re-election is not my goal. My goal is impact, improvement, and progress. So just work with us, but again, we're not perfect, and I'm gonna be quiet because I'm starting to put on my preacher voice, and I don't wanna do that.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. With that being said, council, everyone has had an appropriate time to speak. What I'd like to, at this point, Thomas, go ahead and call the question. With this, I'd like to entertain a motion for a consideration approval of a bond resolution in a governmental agreement. Oh, there is a motion, I'm sorry.
There's already a motion.
I would like to go ahead and call the, I said, call the questions, and I read it, right? I was, go ahead and call the question for this measure. All those in favor of consideration approval of a bond resolution in a governmental agreement with the city of Mableton, Georgia, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, let it be read, that it was 4-3 with negative from Councilwoman Herndon, Councilwoman Ock, and Councilwoman Oladapo. Thank you for the spirited discussion, council. To the public, for the public hearing comments as well. From here, member council, we have some adjustments that we've made to the agenda. Madam Clerk, we're gonna go now to item 7A. Is that correct, Councilwoman? 7A. We're gonna go to 7A, which is a rezoning case. It's case 2025-001. This is the second read of ordinance from TKHC Ministries. It's a rezoning for a tax parcel from GC, which is general commercial, to R20, which is residential, single-family. And this is for the construction of a church.
Mayor, it was requested at the last meeting that perhaps this would be on percentage. With that being said, was there any substantial changes do we need to go through at length? Or can we just kind of?
Well, I see Mr. Wheeler coming forward. Do you wanna let him come forth and you can address the question?
If he wants to, I mean, he made the effort.
Directing his, you wanna, no, just in his defense, I asked him to make his way to the podium, just in case there were questions.
I, well, I was just trying to.
Sure, just speed things up. Well, the fact that it was a second read on this, because this wasn't ordinance, is correct.
That is correct.
Yeah, so we can, I mean, we can just move forward to voting.
Like, we're ready to make a motion.
Make a motion, ma'am.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve this rezoning case with the stipulations that the planning commission recommended.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion on this item? I don't think the council has any. As I've said, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approval of the rezoning case 2025-001 for TKHC Ministries, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. And no opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. We are now going to go back to item 6A.
Can I, can I make a motion for a five-minute recess?
Indeed, you can. The motion's been made for a five-minute recess, do I have a second? Thank you, motion's been seconded. My Councilwoman Jeff, all in favor of a five-minute recess, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We, the council will stand in recess for five minutes. We, uh, the council will stand in recess for five minutes.
Thank you. Consideration of an ordinance creating Chapter 5 alcoholic beverages and for other lawful purposes. Counsel, as you're aware, when we took over business licenses, they were part of the regulated business license that we did not take over at that point in time. Mr. Hughes, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we had 90 days in which we'd brokered with the county.
Yes, sir. The most recent IGA gave us until the end of August. Yes, sir.
So, at this point in time, counsel, this is before us as a first read. And Director Hughes, if you want to go into that, there may be a couple of questions, but I'll let you proceed on this matter.
Absolutely. I will ask Lamai Edmonds, who's our business license supervisor, to come up and just share.
Sure. Oh, I was back in the corner. Ma'am? We're going to have to have staff wear their green Mableton shirts so we know who they are when they're out there in the audience. She's sitting back there, resident number six.
I mean, at least she has a badge on.
She has her badge, okay. Yes. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Oh, is it on? Is the mic on? Good evening.
Is the mic on? Is it on? Is the mic on? Say something.
Good evening?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we got you.
I'll speak up. Was there a question or did you guys want an overview?
Just an overview.
Just give them a overview to start with and we'll see if there's any questions.
Sure. So, as you mentioned, business license was adopted, but there are regulatory licenses that are now being implemented. After our IGA ends with the county, we will be issuing our alcohol licenses. And the purpose of this ordinance is to establish that framework so that we can issue those licenses. The purpose of having these regulations are to kind of mitigate and regulate things such as distance requirements, acknowledging zoning compliance, and operational restrictions. So, this gives us the opportunity to set up that framework and introduce this language for issuing of licenses.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Lamai?
One question I had is, in practice, as you work through inspections and all those sort of thing on the property, is there a portion of this that will work with Cobb County share for anybody else to help with those?
Yes, sir. There is a portion of that, and that will be our background checks. So, our background checks will still run through whichever is our active policing or public safety department, and that will be Cobb County for the moment.
Okay, thank you. And so, will we have to do an IGA with them for that or?
I believe that is a per, is like a fee usage from when we run background checks with them. Is that correct?
I do believe that is included in the IGA that we've already agreed to.
That we currently have.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My question is, are we prepared to take this on?
Great question. I believe that we are. The big heavy lifting here is being able to issue new licenses and renewals. And because the county has already done the big part of background checks and all of the things needed to issue those licenses, we're not going to get a large influx immediately. And so, we have the time to kind of scale up and be prepared as those licenses come through. The biggest thing is going to have background checks running through renewals and getting those renewals out. And as we have new licenses, we will be prepared to issue those as well.
Thank you. Is there any additional hiring that we need to do related to take on this additional service?
I believe that the organizational chart includes more staff that we can hire for. We don't have to add to that. And I think once we are fully staffed, we'll be able to adequately address these licensing.
And do we understand what the anticipated or projected volume is going to be?
So, the county has about, I believe with alcohol, maybe around 170 licenses that they've issued, and that's including retail, package, and pouring. So, we know that for sure. Of course, there could be new licenses that have been issued since our last data pool, but I don't believe it'll be more than about 200.
How long do we need to appoint an alcohol review board?
So, this ordinance does address the alcohol license or the licensing review board, and it sets that up. It allows us to create that and utilize that as we issue licenses or if we have denials or revocation, any kind of violations, we will be able to utilize that.
I was going to mention that because that is a review where that we do need to get stood up in conjunction with this. So, there's a section in the ordinance that speaks to that and to the composition of it. So, as council members, we need to be prepared and get ready to make appointments as it relates to this.
And for that, I'm reading that portion. It obviously says 10 members, one by the mayor, and then council. Then who makes up the remainder?
So, I think the remainder, I'm not looking at it right now, but I think those are ex officio type by virtue of, again, I'm not looking at it right now, but different cities set it up different ways, and this has been an item for discussion, particularly with this one, because it's definitely one that has, I mean, they're all important, but some cities have the sheriff on it, the police chief or designee, some have, you know, the city attorney. So, they vary by each one, so I don't have it right in front of me, so I can't say. But I do know some of them I think were by virtue of office.
Okay. And then, the other question, do we have an opportunity, I know that Councilwoman Oladipo asked this question about something else, but do we have the opportunity to amend, to not necessarily just be residents of the district, but also have businesses in the district?
I'm not clear on that question.
The makeup of the board, to have people that might not necessarily live in the district, but have a business, or might not live in the city, but have a business in the city.
I'll have to go back to the charter.
The charter, the charter says they have to reside in the city.
They have to reside, yeah.
I went back to check if, yeah, we could have business owners.
That's a charter.
It's a charter thing.
Yeah.
But we don't have the opportunity to change it?
No. I mean, that's a valid concern, because I raised that, because a lot of businesses in the neighborhood approached me to ask if they could support and be on a board, but according to the charter, they can. So, you just have to be, they have to reside in the city of Mableton.
We have other ways for them to be involved.
Sure.
Any other questions, counsel? Done? All right. So, this is the first read on this. Thank you, Ms. Lamai, for coming up. So, she's done the intro of the first read. Counsel, you have an opportunity for us to ask questions. At this point in time, there is a public hearing in conjunction with this. Again, to remind the council, this is so that the city of Mableton can start issuing our own alcohol beverage licenses right now. That's still being done by the county, but this is one of those services that we're going to take on ourselves. And so, at this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and open up a public hearing related to this. Members of the audience, if you'd like to speak for this matter, we're going to keep with the same rules as before. And if you want to speak for this, please line up against the bulkhead, or if you're the first one, take the position at the mic. All right, I'll make a second call, sir.
Can I just ask a question?
Are you going to play Mr. Citizen and go up there? I figured you was. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. Mr. Ferguson.
Good evening, counsel.
District.
My name is CJ Ferguson. I am a member of District 5. My question was really to the administration to understand, when is, when will these get renewed? Do they get renewed when they renew their business license, or do they get renewed at some other interval? Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilman Ferguson. The renewals are actually separate, so the renewal season for alcohol would actually open in October.
So, October to what?
As I said, so they have to be renewed by December 31st. And different from occupational tax, they don't have a grace period through March, so they would have to have renewed their alcohol license by December 31st.
Great, thank you.
So, when you talked about the ramp up, you don't, I mean, all of those for this year have already came in for the most part?
No, no renewals have come in for this year.
So, you expect in October for 170 businesses to come in?
Yes, sir. So, those renewals will come in, and that is part of the prep that we put in over the past few months to set up software and have those renewals ready to be taken in fairly easily. Like I said, the biggest thing is that they'll have to go and get their background checks and submit their documents for review, and that's pretty standard for that timeframe.
Is there, is there any coordination with code enforcement, I'm thinking from an enforcement standpoint, to ensure that all of our businesses actually have the adequate license and that they get renewed or a net new license?
So, with alcohol license, one, they are required to have a state license as well. And usually, any businesses operating with an alcohol license that don't have either a local or state license, we're aware or we become aware of it. If we do catch wind that there is a business operating without, of course, we would work with the State Department to go out and have their agents go out and find out what's going on there, or either shut their operations down. So, we could work with code enforcement, but typically that would go through the state.
Thank you. All right. I'll make my final call for anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this ordinance. Hearing none, I'll then turn the public hearing to the Nayside. So, if you are not in support of the city of Mableton taking on alcoholic beverages licenses, you have your opportunity to approach the podium at this time. Final call, if anyone would like to step forward. Mr. Hutchins, you twitched. Thank you, sir. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this matter. And there's no action, further action to be taken, being the fact that this is a first read. With that, we'll move on to Item 6B, which is the first read in a public hearing, and ordinance updating Chapter 7, which is taxes, fees, and assessments in the Code of Ordinances. This is the regulation of occupation, taxes, and the business licensure for other purposes for the city of Mableton Code of Ordinances. Mr. Hughes?
Mayor Owens, thank you again. And again, I would like Lamai Edmonds to come up and just give you a brief overview of the ordinance as it's proposed at this time.
Thank you. First question I do have is that, this is a first reading, but it's updating the chapter, so I'm assuming we're updating a separate part of the chapter.
That's correct. So, again, the business license, the original chapter was Chapter 7, and this will add to that, the divisions that include regulatory licensing.
Thank you, ma'am.
And just a brief overview for the regulatory, very similar to alcohol, is in the same category. With this, we'll include the additional licenses and permits that are issued through the Licensing Division, licenses such as mobile vending, pawn and precious metal, health spas, that sort of thing. And so, this is going to give us that regulatory framework for those licenses and permits.
Was this heard at the planning commission meeting last night?
Yes, it was.
Were there any notes that were to be shared with the council?
They were, and they were added to the agenda for your review. The planning commission did recommend quite a few recommendations and changes that could be looked at regarding this ordinance.
Okay. I was at the meeting, I took notes too, but I didn't know this was updated. Oh, yeah. Were you waiting on?
Yeah, I was waiting. I thought you was like looking at the notes, because you asked about the notes, so I thought you were reviewing.
Carry on. I was just, okay.
All right. Anyone else? Counsel, any questions? Again, this is the first read for this, so we'll go ahead and take this opportunity to open a public hearing. Again, counsel, anyone, I mean, to our residents, anyone that wants to speak on behalf of this ordinance, please take the opportunity to so now.
Samuel Colbreth from District 6. One thing I did notice during the planning commission meeting last night, parts of the document can be a bit archaic as far as, because it's an old Cobb County document that even they haven't looked into for a while. And then so, I would hope that the city council, planning commission, would look very thoroughly to make sure it adds reflective of, and it's a pretty large document, so to speak, but just make sure we're very mindful, to make sure that we're updating for inclusion and make sure that we're having the right verbiage going forth, because it does read a little weird. I've actually been through all 82 pages, and it's just from an old document that hasn't been updated. And then, there's been shifts and things of that nature and just things thrown in. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Colbreth. Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of this ordinance? Hearing none, is anyone?
So, on, I remember one, and I think it's on a note here, something about the billiard tables, and it was mentioned that maybe billiard rooms is too restrictive, maybe just remove all the restrictions of what makes it a billiard room? Because I think it said more than three, it doesn't matter, it's pretty minimal, y'all, it's not that big a deal.
Is that the notes from the planning?
Yeah, 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 notes from the planning commission. It's, I'm ready to go forward, I'm tired.
Fair enough. Well, as a reminder, this is the first read, so we will have a second read of this going forward. Is anyone that would like to speak against this ordinance? Please come to the podium at this point in time. I'll make a second and final call for anyone who would like to.
I did want to ask this. Madam Attorney, are you going to go through and do the whole redlining of this one with the planning commission's recommendation?
Yes, I do plan to look at the planning commission's recommendations. I plan to talk with staff. If there's anything that staff is disagreeable with, then I do not plan to put that in here, but I will communicate to the council that those were items that were not inserted. We also have dozens, hundreds of pages of documents within the SDS, so we have to, my office is actually going through SDS and making sure that there is nothing that we committed to putting into our codes that are missing from within those documents. So, those two items, which will be planning commission comments as well as SDS stipulations, will be inserted before the next draft. And that'll be done in track changes, so you'll have the opportunity to review whatever adjustments are made.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one has stepped up for, to speak against this ordinance, I'll go ahead and declare this public hearing closed on this matter. Again, this is the first read on this, so there's no action that will be taken this evening. This takes us down to Item 6C, and if I'm correct, Director Hughes, this is the item that we're going to defer?
Yes, sir. We have determined this is going to require a substantial rewrite, so we, this was originally on the planning commission agenda for last night, but because it's going to require a substantial rewrite, we did not present that to them. We will present that to the planning commission next month, and it'll be available for you, for your consideration, your following meeting.
Thank you for that. And this was?
Subdivision ordinance, subdivisions.
Yeah, this is, this is actually a second read on that ordinance, so we'll hold off on that, on that second read until that rewrite can be done. So, this item will be deferred. Counsel, is there any concern with deferment of this item?
No. In fact, are there any other items we can defer possibly?
There's going to be 6E is going to be deferred as well, if there's no objection from the council on that matter.
And we were made aware that 8D also needs to be deferred.
Well, that was not even recognized, because it's not even in the system.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah. So, that will take us to Item 6D, which is the public hearing to consider amending the stipulations of United Security Services Agency in care of Matthew Herbert regarding rezoning application Z-13 of 2009, located at 1140 Old Powder Springs Road Southwest and Land Lot 36 of the 18th District. And this was an item that had been heard before, so as a public hearing on this, I will defer to Chris Wheeler.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Owens. Again, this applicant is just looking to change the zoning stipulations associated with this property. He's looking to open a private security office. Prior zoning stipulations limited the uses for electrician office. So, staff is in support of his request and zoning stipulation changes, as well as the applicant has support from the Mable Improvement Coalition, as well with seven conditions, where staff is in agreement with those conditions as well, too. Staff can submit those to the council as well, or I can read those out loud into the record.
Yeah, we can move forward on that and make a motion. It does call for a public hearing on this matter. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Willie while he's up there? Hearing none, sir, thank you. At this point in time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this case. Again, this is case OZI-2025-002. If anyone would like to speak on behalf of this, please address the podium now. If anyone would like to speak against this measure, please approach the podium now. Seeing no one for or against this, I'm going to go ahead and declare this public hearing closed. I would like to thank no one for speaking, but thanks for opening it up and you had the opportunity to. So, let's move forward on this matter. This is a consideration to amend the stipulations and rewarding the zoning application. At this point in time, Director Hughes, is it appropriate to go forth to vote on this application?
Yes, sir.
Indeed, thank you. With that being said, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the zoning application, OZI-2025-002.
I'd like to make a motion to consider amending the stipulations of United Security Services Agency care of Matthew Herbert regarding rezoning application Z-13 of 2009, located at 1140 Old Powder Springs Road Southwest and Land Lot 36 of the 18th District. A second.
Do we need those conditions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was going to ask if we can include the planning commission recommendations as well as the stipulation letter from Mig dated, if there's a specific date on that.
I don't see that there.
Right.
I see the staff report, which...
This application didn't go before the planning commission, it's just here in front of the planning.
It was already.
Yeah, so the conditions would be the Mableton Improvement Coalition's conditions. And I can read those as well, too, if you want to know exactly what the
And I can read those as well, too, if you want to know exactly what those are.
To include the Mabelton Improvement Coalition's recommendations, stipulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Your amended motion has been made. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing now, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of the motion made by Councilwoman Jeff Coop, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And no opposition. The ayes have it. Thank you, members of the council. At this point in time, we will move to item 8A, which is a presentation discussion of the City of Mabelton's Grant Writing Services, which is going to be by our Sustainability Waste and Beautification Director, Emily Groff.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, ma'am.
If City Manager Tinks was here, he would tell me to be brief, brilliant, and gone, so I'm going to do just that. If we have our slide up here. I wanted to touch base on our grant writing services. We had Chris Brewer with Funded Forward here, but he did have to leave at the intermission. So, I do apologize for that, but I wanted to just briefly put our grant opportunity and our grant writer on your radar and give you his contact information and brief introduction. Next slide, please. So, this is our guy. His name is Chris Brewer with Funded Forward. They've been established since 2018 and have secured in over $18 million for multiple different specialties. All of those could be of interest to the city. Again, I'll give you his email and contact info, but I recognize that I came here multiple times recently for grant applications, so I wanted to just give you an update from our partner in all of this, too, as well. Thank you. Next slide, please. So, with Funded Forward, it was approved in March 26 for a 12-year term, and we pay him a monthly flat fee for unlimited grant writing services at $1,600. He'll research, identify, and provide an unlimited amount of written grant proposals, and he manages reporting and invoicing and award oversight. We, on the city side, help him determine the best fit for who to contact for interested grant projects, which department. We manage his scope and monthly payments. And here, more recently, we update you, the council, on proposed grant projects and obtain approval to apply. In addition, this is also a soft launch towards our Finance Department's forthcoming grants policy to just keep things moving and keep things organized. So, we wanted to take some time there to make you aware of that as well.
Thank you, ma'am. We, another slide, right?
What's up?
Okay.
Yes, next slide, please. So, just a brief status report. We've recently applied to the Georgia Beverage Recycling Grant and also the Safe Streets and Roads for all. Those are the two grants that I approached you with recently. And I think there was just general inquiry into our grant writing services, so I wanted to provide this brief update as well. We are awaiting award notification, next steps for two congressional spending funds, as well as considering upcoming opportunities through the Georgia DNR for beautification and tree and other outdoor recreational projects. And that's all I have. So, brief, brilliant, and gone. So, let me know if you have any questions. I just wanted to give you all this opportunity. I think I.
When will we know once we've been approved for the grants?
So, that's something that he helps with. I don't track it as closely as he does. But I think for the ones that we have already applied for, we haven't heard back officially yet. So, we do have three or four that are cooking and.
They vary. They're all different.
Yeah.
It depends on each one has a different application deadline date and a notification date, and then award date. But some of them, we won't know until it actually occurs, happens.
Some of them.
And then some of them, even if they're awarded, we still don't know if they will actually materialize in money.
Some of them have phased applications, too. So, we'll breach the first part and might get turned down after the second part, but we'll wait and see. So, I want to just give you a brief opportunity and put this back on your radar. If you have any needs or interests or want to talk to Chris about specific things or opportunities for your district, please feel free to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, council was takes us to public comment. So, general public comment. All right, so, Madam Clerk, I'm assuming you have public comment cards. Again, if you have, you're not, if you've already spoken before, you're more than welcome to adjust to counsel and staff again. So, if your name is on there, please feel free. You don't feel like, because you already spoke and you can't again. So, ma'am, one sec. Did you fill out a comment card? Okay, Madam Clerk, she's going to, she's going to call one name.
Okay. I'll call the names. I know some of you have already spoken, but the first one is Leroy Hutchins. Is he still here? Okay.
Thank you and good evening. This is Leroy Trey Hutchins, serving in my capacity as your Board of Education member representing Post 3 for Mabelton, Austell, and Powder Springs. In exactly two weeks, our children will be back in school. So, those of you that have children, I'm sure you're excited to put them back in our hands. And so, their first week in August. But before that, we have several community events in which we're looking to support making sure our students have what they need to get back in school. So, July 16, which is this weekend, well, there's going to be food banks this weekend, but July 26, there's going to be a school prayer walk with First Christian Church of Mabelton. They have hosted our school prayer walk for the last five or six years. And so, those of you that would like to participate in that, that will be on July 26. On Saturday, July 26, the sheriff will also host a back-to-school event. You have to register for that particular event as well. I think it's going to be at a park in, is it Pharaoh's? There's a link for it and where it's going to be located. The Powder Springs Task Force is also going to be hosting a back-to-school event for those that are in the Powder Springs area or live closer on that side. And then Hope Outreach Center will host their event on July 26 from 11 to 4. They're in the same plaza as, I believe, Code Enforcement or it's the Gordon Shopping Center. Sunday, July 27, Reflections of Trinity will also host an event for our students. Right here on July 30, AmeriGroup will host their annual back-to-school event here at the EpiCenter from 11 to 1. August, and I think other people will discuss the other initiatives. But those are those that are right here and right around the Mabelton area, and I believe we have other people that will discuss specific events as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins.
Okay, Sam Cobrith, and following Sam Cobrith is Joe Lee Eller.
Good evening, City Council and City of Mabelton. My name is Sam Cobrith. I am the current chairman of the Austell Community Task Force, and I want to invite you all out to our 24th Back-to-School Jam event that we've hosted at the South Cobb Rec Center for a number of years. There are some changes this year, because with our distribution partner, Empty Stocking Fund, we're specifically targeting local Title I schools. And just to let everybody know, just for everybody's headspace, those schools include Brighton Elementary, Riverside Elementary, City View, Harley Lee Elementary, Limley Middle, and Pebblebrook High School. So, when you do go to the Eventbrite website, and we are searchable on Eventbrite under Mabelton Events, you will have to sign up for your particular time slot, and then your school will be available under that. And then so, but we're trying not to turn away additional, but the target is, is to target those particular Title I funding schools. And then so, but we are delighted to be sponsored by Destiny World Church and working in conjunction with Faces Inc., Girls Inc., and I'm missing a partner, and they're going to get me. But we'd love for you all to come out, and we're also, oh, Faith Christian Church. Oh, yeah, okay. That's a new one. So, but we'd love for you all to come out. We are accepting volunteers as well, and we are accepting donations. So, if you feel so inclined to do so, we'd love for you to do that. And also want to invite you to our monthly meeting, general meeting, that will be taking place at the South Cobb Rec Center, and there is a Zoom option available. And that'll be taking place on Mon, oh, sorry. I didn't get the date for that, did I? So, it's going to be on Saturday, August 2, between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. at South Cobb Recreation Center. And then also, what's also going to be at the South Cobb Recreation Center is going to be our general meeting that takes place every first Monday of the month, which will be August 4 at 7:00 p.m. And we would love for you to come out and share about what you got going on in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Joe Lee, and then following Joe Lee is Hope Roper, if she's still here.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I came tonight mostly because I think a lot of us have heard about how the county is all of a sudden charging us $9.5 million for the police. Some of us remember the vote, and there was sort of a list of services that the city was going to take over, and there was a list of services the county was going to continue to provide. And with the taxes that we've been paying to the county and continue to pay to the county, we're going to cover that. And so, I think a lot of us are very, were confused about what happened. You know, why all of a sudden do we have to pay extra for this? Why was the city not able to fight this? How, what percentage of our budget is $9.5 million if we just passed a, you know, agreed to do a bond tonight for $6.5 million? And we're talking about having serious conversations about spending half a million dollars a year to cover debt? Then what percentage of our money is that $9.5 million? And then what are we going to be able to do going forward? Because my understanding is this police thing is only for one year. How are we going to get this resolved in a way that looks good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Hope Roper here? Heidi Hunt. And I know Robert Redman left, and Jeff Pageant left, so that's all I had. Oh. And I had somebody that turned in a comment. Oh, but she's already made her comments. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. I do appreciate that. Madam Clerk, we'll go ahead and close our public comment section and move on to item 11, which are consent agenda. There's two items in item of consent agenda, that's approval of the June 2025 work session minutes and the June 25 regular meeting minutes. So, at this point in time, counsel, entertain a motion to approve the consent items on the consent agenda.
So moved, mayor.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilwoman Jeff Coop. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approval of consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. No opposition. The ayes have it. Thank you. We'll now move down to items 12A if our special projects manager Xavier Ross is still in house. Yes. So, this is for consideration, approval of resolution approving the purchase of all fleet vehicles from Wade Ford for the Fleet Department authorization of the mayor to finalize and execute related agreements and documents. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protim, members of the council, leadership and community that is still with us. As we continue our journey with our EV endeavor, we've already made an indelible impression as we are the, one of the first cities to introduce in all EV fleet. As you all may recall, in fiscal year '25's budget, you allowed me to purchase three, ultimately four vehicles for that amount. What I am presenting to you tonight is actually the permission to go ahead and negotiate, well, actually, we've already done the negotiations, to move forward with agreements to purchase from Wade Ford. Now, I'm gonna preferences by saying, we are going to, we are mixing up the fleet a little bit to accommodate the needs of our code enforcement buildings, general administration facilities, and other departments that have used for city vehicles. So, the agreement with Wade Ford, if you look, if you refer to what's in your packet, that is actually below state minimum, the state contracted amount. State contract for the vehicles that we're using minus the F-150 is actually not with Wade Ford. I was able a few weeks ago to negotiate that amount lower than the state contract. Given this council's request, I think that deserves an applause. I would clap for myself. But nevertheless, that is also with the contention agreement that we do, because we've asked for specific specifications in those vehicles, different from what would be a part of the state contract. So, they've agreed to honor that. And also, and just for the record, this gives us permission to purchase as we fulfill my fleet plan. We will not be buying all vehicles at one time. It will be on a scale based upon the need. But by the time we finish this budget at the end of the year, we would have gotten all vehicles on staff in position. It is my posture to make sure that our fleet purchase is aligned with the staff needs at that time right now. And we do have a need for a third and a tenth of what's been budgeted, but as each quarter moves on, I will add to that. And this is the precursor to what will come next month. Next month, I'll bring the fleet policy. No staff will drive a vehicle until we go through the fleet policy in August, but I want to be able to move right past fleet policy into putting them into vehicles. And this is step one. This is a big leap in our EV journey and our digital and cyber footprint as well. So, we look forward to that. And this further adds to one of our qualifiers as we are going after grants that show our sustainability.
Thank you.
Staff's recommendation is approval.
I appreciate this, sir. And I do want to thank Wade Ford for stepping up to the table. I think when they came here a while back, I specifically asked the question about what if vehicles were cheaper elsewhere? And when I took time to look at the state contract, I noticed that there were some other vehicles that were with other dealerships that was not Wade Ford, that was on the state contract. So, I'm happy that they've stepped up to not only honor that, but to beat that cost. My only ask now is going to make sure they continue to do, continue to do that. You know, at least for the life of this, obviously, it will. But, you know, the state contract and council is important, because, you know, the state does its negotiating for us, so that we can ensure we're getting the best pricing. But it's not always with the same vendor, or in this case, the same dealership. So, when I saw the dealership one, I was like, oh, we might have to go establish a new relationship with someone else. So, again, I'm happy the fact that Wade Ford has stepped up with this is a good move.
How many vehicles are we talking about?
11.
And how many do we currently have?
Four. And this is in alignment with our, it is in alignment with the budget and which we all, what we put into the budget that, keep in mind, the vehicles will be purchased, then they'll be augmented, then they'll be introduced to fleet alignment with us.
And this is a vehicle for each code enforcement officer? Is that?
Not necessarily. Ultimately, as when that department, and I don't, I dare not speak for that director, but I will say this, as every department, as that department fills out and the requests are coming in, you will ultimately get to a place where you may see every code officer in it. But even in this first augmentation, every code officer won't have a vehicle, because there are needs across the board. We need admin vehicles. We do need additional, we need vehicles for also administrative functions within other departments. I know that if I could just, and I'm just going from my experiences in this arena, when permits need to be, when sites need to be surveyed, sometimes community development planners only have to go out into the field. Our admin assistants from other departments have to go run errands and facilitate things. Our new communications director tonight mentioned to me the use of a fleet vehicle to be able to run errands. So, there is a strong need across the board. Ultimately, by the time we finish this and provide it, code enforcement does have all the officers in place servicing all the districts in the commercial need, then we should, then we'll be looking at that. But that's also in tandem being weighed with the needs of what we currently have right now.
I want to make two comments to that. First one is, I live for the day when we can send a drone out for code enforcement instead of a vehicle and a person. That's number one. Number two is that, you know, in the theme of sustainability and our EV approach we go forward, and this is, again, this is partially just my own kind of thoughts about this, is I want to make sure that we're able to enhance the availability and the productivity of every single vehicle, so to ensure that that's not just somebody's vehicle, that's somebody's vehicle. There's a vehicle that's available and meets the need of the purpose, that that vehicle can be deployed for that measure. And that way, we can make the most out of every vehicle at every time. And it's really an operations thing, so I don't want to overstep here, but it's my goal to make sure that we're being as effective and efficient with how we are purchasing and the most use getting out of every vehicle every day of every opportunity.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, I don't necessarily know if Mayor Protim was making this insinuation, but I definitely want to address it on the front end. We will not, this is a directive from the city manager. It will carry on through every department. We will not have a designated. We will not have a designated vehicle assigned to a person. And you almost can't have that in an EV fleet. The burn pattern for energy, for energy configurations is based on the velocity of a person's and how they drive a vehicle. Um, so if I currently own EV, I don't, but I know somebody on the dais does. If I drove very aggressive, I'm going to burn energy a lot quicker, thus accelerating the usage of that battery, thus having to put it back on a charge more frequently. And then that bad, that vehicle builds its burn pattern of energy based upon the usage of the driver. So the vehicles will be put into a rotation acco, across all departments. Um, now, of course, there may be, there will be, there will be some allocated specifically for code enforcement, um, buildings, because buildings has to use the trucks, they have to go up onto land, um, you know, go up onto, onto construction sites. But even all that will be on a rotation. The goal is to keep vehicles from learning a particular person's pattern. So therefore, we don't accelerate the life, the lifeline of that, the livelihood of that battery.
Well, that wasn't necessarily where, direction I was going in. But I think it's important to have some sort of needs assessment document to be able to understand what those requirements are. Like what do you, you know, what are you measuring that against? Like, how do you know that this is the exact estimate that you need based off of, off of how you plan on utilizing it?
So that was done prior to this year's budget that every department made requests. Um, and I'm, and I'm going to look over at our finance director who can, who can look at me and agree. There were a lot more vehicles requested than what we put in the budget. This was a scaled down to what the need was based upon where we are today and where we're going to be by the end of this budget. Because even today, right now, we're five vehicles short, go, just physically today, so.
Counsel, any other questions? Comments for Mr. Ross?
Um, one, one question I have, um, and I don't know who this is for, but does this, every time we purchase a vehicle, um, our insurance goes up exponentially?
Not exponentially, it is, it is a scale, but with Germa, there is a scale based on the amount of assets and the price of those assets. Um, however, that, it, it's accounted for within the budget, the increase is. But also on the, on the savings side, we do, we are taking all designated precautions. I had a whole two hour conversation with him last week. We are taking precautions to make sure that, that are, that we, for the increase, we are also subsidizing our cost savings by virtue of the safe, of the risk management pieces of the puzzle. So I have, I've done that on that end. Some, a simple gesture such as adding a camera takes, takes a third off of that every quarter. And that's the internal camera that faces, um, the driver. So therefore, we know if, God forbid, if there ever is a, an accident, we can adj, we can account for what our driver was doing at the time of that accident. Um, do I meet, does my fleet training program meet the state requirements? It will by the time we roll it out next month. So we are checking off the boxes that for the increase, it does, it, it's been projected in the budget, but also to make sure that we check our boxes and, and meet the cost savings as well.
And, and last question on that same point, uh, and I know we're running long, I'm sorry. Um, the, the cameras and those sort of things, the policies that you're putting in place, um, are going to, um, assess points and all that other sort of thing?
Yeah, the current policy that we're demoing, that we, that we'll come back to you all, is the one recommended by DOAS and Germa from the state. We will, of course, augment it and, and make it compliant to, to our needs here in Mableton. But you all will get that in draft, hopefully for your approval at our, at the August meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I, I guess I would ask along those lines, is there anything that you will need to bring back before us as it relates to ensuring that, um, those list of things from Germa get enacted?
Everything that gets brought back, Mr. Mayor, will be in the fleet policy, which the policy itself will come next month, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
With that being said, council, go ahead and entertain a motion, uh, to approve the resolution approving of the purchase fleet for all fleet vehicles from Wade Ford for the Fleet Department and authorization of the mayor to finalize and execute related agreements and documents.
Mayor, I make a motion to, um, the consideration and approval of resolution approving the purchase of all fleet vehicles from Wade Ford for the Fleet Department and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute related agreements and documents.
I second.
Thank you, sir. The motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilwoman Herndon. Uh, any other discussions, council?
Is there a price? Did we want to state it?
Um, I, I, he said it was in line with the approved budget.
It's like $470,000.
There's, is...
I meant, did we need to state it in the motion, like not take?
Oh, it should be in your attachments. I don't, it wasn't in the agenda, but it should be in the attachment on seven plus.
Yeah, I think so.
The quote was forty...
$475,000.
$475,000 is the 470,000.
470,000, 425,000.
Yeah, are you looking for the individual price, Councilwoman, of the vehicle? You were looking for the individual price or the whole price? Oh, okay.
Oh, did they come back and find the van?
The van, not yet. When we were at GMA, the conversations, they are still, and we're hopeful. They're still working on it. And I found out they all started working on a box truck. The, the, the goal is just to find a mechanism that can get it over 150 miles without it going dead.
Yeah, the, the, the box truck is promising, but they're not quite there yet.
Got it.
So we're holding off for that. Any other discussion, council? You know, call the question, all those in favor of the motion made by Councilman Ferguson, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No opposition, ayes have it, thank you. Uh, we'll now move to Item 12B. No, I'm sorry, we've already done that.
We're already done with that, 13.
I'm going, hold on, I'm going to go back through just to make sure. Covered, 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 covered. I do believe, council, this takes us apart of Item 13, which is other business in discussion. I do not believe that we have any more in front of us this evening. With that being said, we'll move to Item 14. I would like to, uh, thank, uh, our community development director, Michael Hughes, for standing in place for our city manager tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, I, I would like to thank Xavier Ross, because I know he was out of town and came back, um, back up here to deal with some operational issues, but also to be at this council meeting tonight. So thank you, sir, for taking the time to come back up. Uh, with that being said, um, Mr. Hughes, any comments for this evening?
Uh, Mr. Tinks did leave me, uh, or asked that I highlight a couple of things from this month's city manager's report, just for information. Um, transition is formally complete, uh, for the city as of June 27th. Uh, the essential services required for active city, including, uh, waste management, planning and zoning, uh, code enforcement, environmental management. Uh, and also through, uh, an IGA, we've also secured fire, police, roads, stormwater, 911, and animal services for the community as well. Um, also wanted to note, we have formally adopted a city budget, um, as well. And then completed our first, uh, formal audit for fiscal year 2024. So I wanted to note that as well. Just a couple of quick things too, just facility updates. Uh, 1245, uh, Veterans Memorial Highway Suite 30, we moved in as of July 1st. So excited about that. Um, engineering services, just want to mention through a competitive process that aligns with our city requirements, we've selected four engineers, uh, have been approved to be on call, um, for the city. Um, staffing, um, we've hired eight, uh, individuals. We have most of our directors on board, but have hired eight individuals, support staff since June 2nd. And briefly, just looking ahead, uh, I know there's been some conversation about conducting a council training, uh, going forward. And I know we're, I think Jasmine and the mayor are working and the city manager discussed that. I think the topics to discuss, special, uh, special service districts, uh, service delivery topics, stormwater, diversification of revenue sources, and SPOST. And that is the update from the city manager.
Thank you, sir, for that. Um, Madam Clerk, any comments?
Yes, Mayor, I have some important announcements. Uh, we do have in August, we're going to have qualifying for the seats of District 4, District 6, and District 2. Qualifying will take place at 1245 Veterans Memorial Highway and the administrative biz, uh, building or suite. And the time will be from 8:30 to 4:30, August 18th through the 20th. And this is for the election that will take place on November the 4th, 2025. And the amount of the qualifying fee is $600. And that's based on a percentage of the salary, which is 20,000, and, uh, is based on a 3% percentage. And also, um, there had been some comments previously about finding our, um, supporting documents, uh, related to the agenda. I just want to remind everybody to go to our website, mableton.gov. You can go to the city clerk's page and, uh, go down, scroll, scroll down the page and you can hit Agenda Minutes and Recordings, green, big green button. And that will get you, um, the recordings from the past, agendas from the past, current agendas, planning commission agendas, anything you want to see, all the supporting documents are, are on that website. Or you can go a quicker route and just hit council meetings and go and see, uh, the supporting documents for any meeting you're interested in. And also, I do get questions periodically about people trying to find the minicode code of ordinances. Because we are a new city, we do not have a codified minicode touch button online ordinance. Instead, I am uploading the ordinances that we passed on my page. But we are in contract with, uh, minicode, which is now Civic Plus, that bought minicode. And, um, they're on the, I guess you could say the downhill, almost there process, because every time we pass an ordinance, I send it to them and they run it before their legal department and they're in the process of codifying it. So I would expect within the next six months, we'll have that official minicode ordinance on the website. But right now, it's in process with the, um, editor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Attorney, anything?
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Davis?
Uh, yes, since I've talked a lot before, I just want to say thank you all for coming out tonight. Uh, it's always great to see the community involved. Uh, want to repeat an announcement in terms of, uh, the Osteo Community Task Force having their back to school jam on, uh, August 2nd, uh, this year at, um, 10 until 2 at the South Cobb Recreation Center. So be there, they've been doing this now for, I think, say, 24 years. Uh, and it's always been, had a great impact on the community. So we'd love to have you out there and we are looking for volunteers as well. And have a great night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oladapo?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening, everyone. I honestly, so, so much has been said, I don't think I want to beat a dead horse. But, um, just want to thank you all for coming tonight and for your engagement, both in person and online. Um, and I also want to flag, um... Allison, do we have the, the flyer to present? Okay, gray. On a lighter note, back to school, fresh haircut for the boys. Um, something that I'm, I'm sponsoring, uh, for this back to school, uh, year. Last year, I did a co-sponsorship with Pure Hope Church and our district rep, Tara Cummings, um, to, for a backpack drive and we gave out, um, 225 book bags to 70, over 70 families. And this year, I was thinking, what else can I do? I see a lot of great organizations, um, doing book bags and, um, school supplies. And I thought, you know what, the kids got to look good to feel confident. So that's how this came about. So maybe next year, we can do something for the girls. Um, but if you're in District 2, please, um, sign up. And we have a licensed and insured barber here in the city of Mableton to cut, cut your kids' hair. And if you're not, please share. Um, I just want to make sure that we help out parents as much as possible with kids going into school and all the expenses, so. So I have, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman. Um, is it just kids?
Yes, sir, just kids. Trying to get a free haircut.
Thank you, ma'am, it's a great opportunity.
Yes, that's awesome, I love that. Uh, good afternoon, everyone, or good evening, I should say, hope you guys. Uh, thank you all for staying late. I know we've had some passionate discourse and I just appreciate, uh, you all, um, sharing your thoughts, your concerns, um, tonight. Um, I do want to take a moment to congratulate Allison, our deputy clerk, on being selected, uh, as employee of the quarter. So Allison, uh, we see how hard you're working and your commitment to making a difference and a positive impact on our, on your team as well as the city. And we commend you, we're extremely lucky to have you. And I look forward to all the great work that you will continue to do, so thank you. Um, so one of our own, Councilwoman Ferguson, has milestone birthday. Um, it, I believe it rhymes with nifty, right? On Friday, so...
I thought 18, huh?
Have a, have a very happy birthday. Uh, one of the nonprofits in my district, District 3, Family Life Restoration Center, uh, which is owned by Luther and Angela Washington, they currently need our support. Uh, they are operating a cooling center to serve our unhoused and vulnerable residents, um, ensuring they have safe climate controlled space to escape the summer heat. Um, and so they are seeking assistance to sustain this vital service like basic supplies, utilities, and temporary staffing. If you'd like, like to support, uh, please certainly reach out to me. My contact information can be found on mableton.gov. Uh, Pebblebrook High School, Junior Falcons football program. Uh, Pebblebrook High School alumni and Coach Malone are hosting a virtual fundraiser to support the football team. Uh, treat yourself to some delicious double good popcorn. Um, it's for a good cause, it would go towards feeding the, the team, equipment needs, and purchasing of game day attire. Uh, the fundraiser will be between July 15th and July 19th, so please don't miss out. And let's make sure we rally and provide, rally behind them and provide, um, this support. So there are several back to school events, uh, happening in the, in the community. Um, I want, uh, it's already been touched on, so I won't, I won't, uh, repeat what's been happening, um, but it's already been said, excuse me. I'm partnering with, um, Pure Hope Church, so thank you, uh, Councilwoman Oladapo, with this, uh, back to school bash that'll take place on July 27th at 6601 Maybelland Parkway. Um, and it will be first come, first served, so we'll be passing out school supplies and plenty of funds. So hopefully, uh, we'll get the chance to see you all there. If you want to support, you can support at finances@purehopechurch.org. Um, I don't know if it was a mention, mentioned about Hope Family Resource Center under the leadership of Carolyn Turner. She's also having a back to school barbecue bash that'll be on July 26th from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Uh, in addition, they have been supporting kids' summer lunch programs, uh, all summer long. So I do want to commend her for the work that she's been doing in our community. It is good. And lastly, uh, Green Room Restaurant in Mableton. They're going to have karaoke kids night on Saturday, July 19th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Um, so make sure you come out. If you haven't had a chance to visit, they have some great pizza. So make sure you, you check out, um, check them out, bring the kids out. That's all I have.
Thank you for that.
Did you say that's at the Green Room?
Yes.
Green Room, yeah.
The Green Room from July 19th, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to thank, uh, all the residents for, um, to who spoke in our public hearing today. Thank you for your engagement. And I want to thank all of you who are still in attendance and our, and our directors for make it to the end. And, um, see, there's a, going to be a group bike ride on August 9th, uh, from Atlanta to Mableton to celebrate the completion of the Silver Comet Connector. The completion of the Silver Comet Connector marks an exciting milestone in Cobb's regional trail connectivity to Atlanta. Uh, in addition to riding the Silver Comet Connector, you also get to explore some of the newest trails built by the Path, Path Foundation in Atlanta. And, uh, with, I'm hoping that I might be able to get a team together with Councilman Ferguson and have a Mableton team head out from Mableton, meet at the big group and ride back. But, uh, so just keep an eye out on social media and the website if, if I can convince them to do that with me, so. That's it, guys.
That's awesome. I'd like to join, but I got to learn how to ride a bike first, so.
Councilman Ferguson?
Um, consider me convinced. I will get my fat butt on my bike and we will ride. Um, so if anybody else wants to join, please do. Um, I don't really have anything except to, um, again, congratulate, um, Allison Benson back there. I truly appreciate everything that you do for this council, for this city. Um, you are such... You are such an asset, and I truly appreciate you. Thank you. And thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you all for the spirited conversations. It's what leadership is, and you all are showing your leadership by being out here and by expressing your thoughts, your desires about the way that the city is running. So please know that it does not, doesn't fall on deaf ears. We hear you. Excuse me, I'm tired, so. Sorry. Enjoy your night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Herndon.
All right, I'm going to keep this short. Today, I had an opportunity, along with the mayor, to attend the grand opening of Seven Brew that's in District Six on East West Connector. I highly recommend, if you are a coffee drinker and you're tired of Starbucks, or that you go and definitely support this establishment. I'm telling you, the coffee was amazing, what I had today. So I would like for you to come out and support them. I think they're going to do very well, and it's nice to see the growth along that east-west corridor. A lot of new businesses coming in, so let's support them. And that's it for me. Thank you for all of you who have stayed to the bitter, oh, I didn't mean to say that, to the very end. To the very end. In addition to the nine brave souls that stayed online to continue watching our meeting today, so safe travels home, and see you next meeting.
Great. Thank you. This has been a long night, so I don't want to belabor a lot of things, but I do want to make a couple of points, because I want to have some salient points for people to leave with. And I'll start with this. The financial situation of our city is sound, right? We are not struggling. We are not barely getting by. We are not on the, we're not teetering on going into default by any means. You heard earlier that we went back to Truist, and they gave us a better rate. They don't do that when they're concerned about the financial viability of an entity, right? So all signs are pointing to the financial vibrancy that we have in this city. And the fact that we ended last year in a fun balance, right, in a positive balance. We went through our first year to amass, I think, over a million dollars that we were able to save. We have been fiscally responsible by all accounts in this city, and as long as I'm here, we will continue to do so. So I wanted to spell some of those notes that we're struggling and we're not getting by. We're doing absolutely fine. We're doing great as a city, and has done so while continuing to not have a local property tax. Again, I want to continue to say that, because you will see and hear things contrary to that. But facts are important, ladies and gentlemen. They are very important, and so I want to make sure that we continue to speak to that. We do know how we're going to pay debts. There's a reason why certain things weren't on the agenda. I mean, it wasn't on the budget. You don't put things on the budget until you know exactly what that's going to be. So that's not an oversight that is planned. We also unfortunately cannot go into the depths of discussions about what some things are going to look like in the near future, because we're going to go back into negotiations with the county about a long-term SDS strategy. And that is important to note, and we all want to negotiate in good faith. And so we want to make sure that we're able to go to the county and somehow get a long-term agreement that we all can be happy with. No one, and I can speak for everyone on this council, no one was happy about the deal that we ended up agreeing to. But to those that may feel like we didn't fight, or we just rolled over, we just accepted it, not the truth, right? The county had put numbers out there that we felt was absurd, and we fought long and hard. We fought literally to the last minute to get the best possible deal that we could. Now, the question about double taxation comes up, and it's one that we'll continue to, you will hear about, and it's one that I can say that we're still looking into. But I want to be very clear about something really succinct here. The issue of property taxes and what we pay, and whether that is double taxation or not, simply boils down to this. It depends on what the county pays for with that money that we, as citizens, pay into the county. Being even more simple about this is that if the money we pay into the county, they use for police, use for our police, then that is double taxation. If we pay them for money that they don't use for that service, it's harder to say that's double taxation. So I'm not going to sit here today and say that we're being double, there is double taxation. We know that. We all know that. Every, double taxation exists. That's why the SDS Act itself exists, because there is double taxation, and the SDS Act is what allows us, between cities and counties, to negotiate that on what that is. So we are within our rights to engage in SDS conversations and explore where we have avenues of double taxation. Is there double taxation going on? Yes, absolutely, without a doubt. How much that is, I cannot sit here and say that. I know what I'd like to believe it is. I think it's the same amount that we actually pay them, right? And what a lot of citizens believe, that to be the same thing. But I can't sit here and say that's absolutely the truth. We will continue to explore it. We'll continue to have conversations with the county about that. But I do want people to completely understand that we are fighting, and the fact of us just rolling over is not something that we just did, or we just, we didn't want to put up a fight. I also think that, you know, the full context of understanding what was going on, and where sanction would come in, sanctions would come in, and absolutely shut down funding that goes to the county, but not just the county, to all of the other cities as well, to Ostel, to Powder Springs, to Marietta, to Acworth, all funding from the state level would stop. A lot of the abilities to grants that we're talking about, that's even in flux, would stop. So I want to make sure people understand the context in which we have to make these decisions and things we have to move forward with. I don't think it's a secret to say that there were going to be rash repercussions for us very quickly if sanctions did employ. There were cities that were going to be looking for every opportunity, including litigation, to get out from under sanctions. So we were going to find ourselves on an island, which, hey, I'm a fighter. Let's fight. I'm a Marine, more so. Let's really fight. But we got to fight smartly, right? We got to fight in a way that we can continue to move forward. We got to fight in a way that does not alienate all of our other brother and sister cities that we have in this county. I want to take a position where hopefully, we can bring folks together, and we can bring our, my fellow mayors, our fellow councilpeople together, to understand that there is a better path forward for this county and for all the cities. And we can do that better united than we can with us sitting in one room, with all the cities sitting in a separate room, and the county in a completely separate room. That is not how we're going to move this county forward. So I want everyone to have a clear understanding of where we are and what we're doing, and why we're taking the approaches that we are. And it may not be fully understood, and I understand that. You know, my office is open at any time for questions and comments. Feel free to email if you don't understand, because I do realize there's a lot of information, misinformation, lack of information that is out there. And I think some of it just is misunderstanding. I think some of it is absolutely a lack of education, and I think some of it is actually planted, because they want to see the city fail. So I believe it's a combination of a lot of those things, but I'm always one that's going to work to separate fact from fiction. Again, we're going to live in the facts of what we're dealing with, and we're going to move forward united, and to be able to see the best path forward for this city. So I'm going to leave it at that. I think there is one other thing. You will hear us talk about other things that we're talking about going forward. There is this notion of city light. It is a thing. But I've long said that we need to look at every single service and do a cost analysis, cost-benefit analysis on it. If it makes more sense for us to own that service, then we should own that service. The idea of, you know, what may have been said during campaign season or in the lead-up to this, the fact is, we are here where we are right now, right? And we have to live in the present and the challenges that are facing us. I want to make sure we do that going forward. You will, and you have seen some reference, I think there's a reference earlier, it's even about property tax. And oh, yes, there's reference to property taxes and what we have. I've addressed it before, but I'll say so again. The ad valorem taxes, which is the sell, purchase and sale of motor vehicles in the city, is technically deemed as a property tax. It's through the Department of Revenue, the state office, and then they basically go through the county, and then the county pays us for that. But that is for funds directly related to the sale and purchase of vehicles in the city. It is not a property tax that is levered. So I want to make sure everyone understands that. Lastly, on a lighter note, Councilwoman Herndon mentioned the Seven Brew that we went to this morning. It's fantastic. The coffee was good. I'm not going to compare it to Starbucks. I still think our Starbucks is nice, but it was good coffee. But it did give us an opportunity to lead me to kind of talk about what I want to end up with is the Small Business Saturday initiative that I had started once before last year. I'm bringing it back. I've talked to my office to make sure that we can do this. Every Saturday, we're going to be profiling a local small business that exists here in the city. This Saturday will be Seven Brew, because they are in the midst of their launch, and it's been a fantastic launch for them thus far. This is the second-largest launch that they've had in the country ever as an organization right here in Mableton. And if Saturday turns out the way that they think it's going to turn out, this will be the largest launch they've ever had in the country, which tells me what I already know, that in the city of Mableton, if we build it, they will come. If we provide opportunities for people and small business owners, if we provide opportunities for our residents and citizens to go out, come out and enjoy themselves, they will do just that here in our city. No need to go to Vinings, or Smyrna, or Midtown, or Buckhead. All those places are nice, but I might be a little biased, but they're not as nice as Mableton. So Small Business Saturday is back. Every Saturday, a Small Business Saturday in Mableton. Look forward to a new small business every Saturday as we move forward with this initiative to make sure we are supporting our small businesses. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. With that, counsel, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you. Motion.
Do we?
Do we?
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, yes, we do.
Signing it outside of that.
If there's no discussion on the executive session topic, and I'll just, I'll...
Let's, we can. I think we should. It shouldn't take, shouldn't take long. I hate to say that. Shouldn't take long, but let's do that. So, so counsel, I'll delay the last request. I'll entertain a motion to take us into executive session for real estate personnel litigation and miscellaneous.
I move to take us into executive session for personnel...
Litigation.
Real estate litigation and miscellaneous.
Thank you. A motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made properly, second by Councilwoman Oladipo.
Jeff Coats.
Oh, Jeff Coats, sorry. All of us in favor of entering executive session, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, who will not be here when we exit executive session, thank you for your time. I appreciate you. Thank you for staying with us through this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, who will not be here when we exit executive session, thank you for your time. I appreciate you. Thank you for staying with us through this evening.
Guys, it's almost midnight.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for sticking with us while we were in executive session. Counsel's point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to exit executive session.
I move to exit executive session.
A second.
Thank you, motion's been so moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of exiting executive session, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, thank you. Counsel, we have any further business? I think we have a motion that is yet to be made.
I'd like to move that we authorize the mayor to finalize and execute in substantial form the agreement with Asmau and Idrissu Yunusa for the purchase and sale of property within the city located on or near 6084 Maplewood Parkway for a purchase price not to exceed $297,000.
A second.
Thank you, motion's been seconded. Any discussion, counsel? Here and now, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of a motion made by Councilwoman Jeff Cook, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, thank you. Any other business in front of us, counsel?
Mr. Davis?
We have the, uh...
Mr. Davis?
Yes. Make the motion.
Please, sir.
Okay. I move that we authorize the mayor to finalize and execute in substantial form the agreement with L2L27 LLC for the purpose of and sale of property within the city located on or near Hicks Road, Concord Road, and Brazos Drive for a purchase price not to exceed $5.5 million.
A second.
Great, thank you, motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilman Ferguson. At this point in time, any discussion, counsel? Here and now, discussion, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of a motion made by Councilman Davis, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. No opposition, the ayes have it. Please note that that motion did pass. And thank you, counsel, I do not believe there's any other business in front of us.
Make a motion for us to...
I'll allow you to make a motion, sir.
Make a motion for us to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilwoman Herndon to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have